Use permits and concurrent variance application, comprehensive land use plan, maps and amendments to the zoning resolution. Citizens may speak for or against zoning issues and each side will have up to 10 minutes total to present its case. The planning commission's recommendations will be forwarded to the city's mayor and council for final decision on the fourth Tuesday of the next month. We will proceed with the agenda. Staff, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley.
President.
Commissioner Perry.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Com- Commissioner Walters.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Com-
Did you say Devon?
Yes.
Present.
Commissioner Wesley.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to the approval of minutes. Commissioners, did everyone get a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, then I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Commissioner Hadley, second.
Properly moved and seconded. Staff, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Hadley.
Aye. If you said Hadley, aye.
Commissioner Perry, aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner William.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Madam, we have all ayes.
Okay, the ayes have it. With that, we'll move on to old business. One-
I'm sorry, I have a point of reference. Who made the motion and who did the second?
Yeah, it's difficult for me to see when we're doing it this way. If everyone could say their last time I announced who made the motion and who seconded it, but actually, for this purpose, can whoever makes the motion, can you just state your name loudly? And then whoever seconds it, could you as well? I think it would just make things flow better than me going back and announcing who, um-
Absolutely.
Who said it. Is that cool with everybody?
Sure.
Okay.
Commissioner Hadley. Commissioner Jones, I, 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 um, I moved it and it was seconded by Commissioner Hadley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. So item one, public hearing to consider Z twenty-two dash zero zero seven. The applicant Dorothy Crowell Crowley is requesting a rezoning from AG one to R four, single family dwelling. And staff, I will let you take it from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Derek Hall, Community Development Regulatory Affairs Director. And I'll be giving the presentations for tonight. I would ask if the commission, as well as the public, just bear with us as we get the slide presentations together. And then, in addition, as we move through the presentations, Madam Chair and members of the commission, if there are questions, I would recommend if there are questions related to the items from the public at the time we open the public hearing, if we could allow the residents stakeholders to use the hand raising function so that we can call on individuals and then we will unmute those individuals. And then after we close the public hearing, we will have the microphones open to the commissioners so that they may ask questions of staff and/or the app. So with that said, I will start with the first agenda item, which as you've indicated is Z twenty-two dash zero zero seven. The location of the project site is twenty-two ten Wallace Road. The request is to rezone from AG one Agriculture Zoning District to R four Single Family Dwelling Zoning District to construct twenty-six single family residential dwellings on twelve point six acres. By way of background information, there was an initial application to rezone this property from AG one to CUP that was submitted September twenty twenty. That case number was Z twenty dash zero zero two. The planning commission heard the case and before it could proceed to city council, the application was withdrawn and that occurred November twenty twenty. There was a resubmital of an application that occurred in twenty twenty-two. Staff prepared the staff report. The applicant held a community meeting and the item was scheduled for public hearing at Planning Commission, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Doing that presentation in that discussion, staff recommended to the planning commission to defer the case to allow the applicant to host additional community meetings and to consider revising the proposed site plan. Since the August twenty-fourth, twenty-two public hearing meeting, the applicant has held additional community meetings to gather input from the community, to revise the site plan and to incorporate changes and resubmit to city staff. The latest request from the applicant is to change the zoning district from CUP to R four. By way of background information related to the comprehensive plan, the current, the current land use designation is suburban neighborhood. As it relates to the compatibility of the proposed project to the comprehensive plan, this proposed project of twenty-six single family homes in a R four zoning district is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The current zoning for the site is AG one for agriculture. Agricultural. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning from AG one to R four. I will note, as you look at the zoning map, the project site is indicated by the star. There are several R three zoning districts in place to the north west and east of the project site. There are additional AG one zoning districts to the south. Uh, and within the vicinity, there is a CUP zoning designation as well. And CUP stands for Community Plan. Next slide. This shows an aerial view of the project site, again indicated by the yellow star. As you can see, the site abuts Wallace Road to the south and a little bit to the west. Next slide. The slide before you shows the revised site plan. It includes lots for twenty-six single family homes. It also includes walking trails and other amenity areas within the project site. The point of access into the subdivision is off of Wallace Road. Next slide. As it relates to the land use analysis for the project, staff offers the following considerations to the planning commission. The applicant has commu- has coordinated community meetings to address some of the concerns and issues. That has resulted in a revised site plan, uh, taking into account some of the recommendations from the community. The applicant has changed the zoning district from Community Unit Plan, CUP, to R four. And this zoning district is consistent with the comprehensive plan land use map. The minimum lot size for the R four zoning district is nine thousand square feet. As was mentioned previously, three sides of the site is currently zoned R three. The applicant is proposing the next higher level zoning for residential use, which is R four. Access to the project site will be taken off Wallace Road. As a result, to deal with the potential traffic mitigations related to the project, the traffic engineers for the city of South Fulton have required for the applicant to install a deceleration, deceleration lane on Wallace Road. In addition, uh, the applicant is required to install sidewalks along Wallace Road. Next slide. Based upon the revisions to the site plan and in consultation with other city departments related to the elements for traffic and overall engineering and in attempt to revise the staff plan or the site plan, I'm sorry, to address some of the concerns expressed by the community, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Subject property shall be restricted to twenty-six units only. All dwelling units are required to have a two-car garage. An HOA, a homeowners association, shall be established to propose developments for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas and covenants regulated to sustainable uses and structures. The walking trail materials shall include what's listed here on the screen, including moach, crushed stone, or recycle recyclable materials. It's previously, it was previously mentioned that the applicant is required to install a deceleration lane on Wallace Road. Additional infrastructure that will be required will be installing curb and gutter and a five-foot sidewalk sidewalk along the entire frontage of Wallace Road. And this frontage is within the boundaries of the parcel and the project site itself. And then finally, frontage alone Wallace Road, there should be a minimum twenty-five foot natural undisturbed buffer with a ten-foot improvement setback with a decorated privacy fence, a decorative privacy fence. And with that, Madam Chair and members of the commission, staff concludes our presentation and we are here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Hall. Without, I will entertain a motion to open the public comment.
This is Commissioner Perry. I move that we open the floor for public comment.
Commissioner Walters, I second the motion.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Ms. Parks, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we have all ayes.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Can the applicant, uh-
I'm Dorothy Crowley.
Can, can you turn up your volume a little bit? I don't know if anyone else is having trouble hearing you, but I'm having trouble hearing you.
Well, I was gonna take it with us. Let me, can you hear me now?
A, a little bit better.
Okay. This is far as my computer will go, I'm sorry. I'll speak louder.
Okay.
Okay, um.
So we will have, you'll have ten minutes for and ten minutes against, um, and go ahead, Ms. Crowley.
Okay, I'm the applicant and, um, I was just, just to thank you, Director Hall and the, um, the council for, um, reviewing our application. We have submitted this application to request an R four zoning. We have met with, uh, the community, uh, on four, the five occasion, on four occasions, we, uh, met with the community. So, and they voiced their concerns. We met with them to address their concerns. Uh, we made the changes that they were requiring and requesting for the rezoning, uh, from a CUP to, uh, a residential. We've made that change. They wanted us to, um, look at our, the type of homes. They did not want duplex, so that was definitely taken off of the, uh, agenda or consideration. We have moved the, um, the, the, the density that they requested. Uh, they wanted one, at one point, one house per acre, two houses per acre, but with the zoning that we have now, we've reduced our density to twenty-six homes from the thirty-two initial homes that we had gone in with a proposal for. In meeting with, um, the community, they wanted to see some of the, uh, homes that were built in the community by the builders, so we did do a community tour, took about, I think it was about fifteen of us went on a tour to see the build, the homes that the builders, the builder had built, uh, in the area. Uh, we did that on the, um, I think November seventh, uh, where we went out and everyone had an opportunity to see the builder, speak with the builder, see the type of concessions that he does, the homes that he's built, uh, and ask any questions that they had. We made the, all the concessions that the community has proposed to us or concerned about. And so we're just asking now for an approval for us to move forward with the zoning from the community.
I'm the old red table phone.
Thank you, Ms. Crowley. Are you, is, are you finished? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Any questions that anyone has? I'm here to, to answer those questions. My family and I are excited about, um, the South Fulton area. We have used the land use and development guidelines to make sure that we're in, in, uh, in line with what the requirements are. As, um, Director Hall has said, you know, we sent that information over to them. We made those adjustments and it is in line with what the city of South Fulton is requesting along with the sand town, um, sand town, uh, development.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any comments for this development, staff? That we would share at this time?
Uh, there are, um, some comments. We received a couple of emails related to this project. Madam Chair, while I locate those comments, can we, um, go to the individuals who have their hand raised and we can start to call on them? And then as we go through those individuals, I will make sure that I pull up any relevant comments.
Okay, um, I may need staff's help with hands. I'm not, uh, super Zoom savvy, so, um, where would I see people?
We will help you with, with those. We can-
Yeah, this is my first Zoom, uh, meeting, so I'm just not sure.
All right, Mils.
Okay, so Nadia, can you help out with identifying, uh, the individuals whose hands are raised? And, uh, just for record-keeping purposes, can you please state your name once we unmute you?
Just to be clear, you're taking questions from the, from the public right now? Or from commissioners?
We are taking questions from the public, um, for the public hearing part.
Right, right, right. Okay, so the hands, the hands raised is how, how people are giving comments. We don't do comment cards. I just want to have clarity on the, how it's, how this is working.
Correct.
So people just raise their hands and then we're, we're gonna call on them and that's how everyone is leaving their public comment tonight?
Correct, and we should clarify that the first individuals that should be speaking are in favor of the project.
Right. Okay, so maybe can people put their hands down if they're not in favor of the project so we can call on them when it's time?
That would be, uh, acceptable.
Okay, I'm ready. Um, the first person is going to be Virgil Smith.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Hall for the overview. Um, my name is Virgil Smith. I live in Barrington Trace, uh, subdivision. I had an opportunity to listen to, um, Ms. Crowley and also the representatives, um, and just take an overview of the project. And I just want to say I'm in favor of the project. Um, my wife and I, we're in the demographic that is targeted and we're both in our seventies and this looks like a great opportunity for us to transition as we get a little older and the project is available. Uh, so just want to state that, uh, I'm in favor of the project and I think it will enhance the city of South Fulton as we increase, uh, density to bring other retail, uh, businesses and restaurants to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, the next comment I have is DS Davis. I'm sorry, you're still on mute? I'm sorry, you still on mute?
Take the headphones out.
Um, press your spacebar. It'll allow you to speak. And hold it. Still, okay, yes. Something is wrong with your microphone now.
Does she have her headphones plugged in?
Oh, ma'am, pull out your headphones so we can all hear. They'll know.
They're not plugged into her computer?
No. Did you want to write something in the chat, possibly? Okay, and I'm gonna call the next person. Is that okay? All right, so the next person is gonna be Stephanie Hudson.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Hudson. I live in, uh, Wind Creek subdivision. And in our subdivision, our homes are pretty tight there together. One of the reasons I did purchase, I didn't want a lot of land. And, uh, I think Ms. Crowley's project is so in touch with what's going on in the future for, um, housing. I applaud her for wanting to bring this into the community. Um, I think it's a great thing. Uh, some people may think it's not affordable, but there's always someone that could afford, uh, certain homes. Uh, there's a lot of people that relocate from California and New York and they would think this is a great deal, or even if someone is selling their home, um, they will have so much equity, they could almost purchase the home outright depending on where you live. Uh, I think Ms. Crowley has addressed all the issues and concerns that the community had. And, um, so I think it would be a wonderful enhancement for the city of South Fulton. And for those who may not know, the city of South Fulton was recently named the number one fastest growing city by Redfin. So I say that to say that we have to get ready for the growth that's happening because we are a city. We're not, that, when, once we became a city, things changed, so, uh, there will be growth. Uh, you're gonna always have traffic at peak times in the morning with the school zone and work hours and the same in the evening. And our traffic is not nearly as bad if you go up to Gwinnett, Cobb, and some other counties. So, uh, I think this is a great project that will enhance our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Uh, the next person that I have is, uh-oh, Harvey F. Davis.
Yes, this is Harvey Davis. I, uh, live in the Versailles subdivision. I'm less than two miles from the property in question. And I've had family members who own homes off of Wallace Road, so, uh, this is near and dear to my heart. I have followed and tracked zonings in unincorporated Fulton County and now the city of South Fulton for, uh, some twenty-plus years. And, uh, this is a great project. Uh, unlike a lot of them, the developer has bought the property and it was not as a condition of zoning. So this is not somebody that doesn't really have skin in the game and this is someone that intends to live in this community. I don't know if people have seen the architectural renderings, but these houses are gonna be gorgeous. And as others said, they might not be for everyone, but that's never the case, but it's consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Uh, the staff has recommended it with conditions. I've been in easily two or three meetings where I have seen her bend over backwards to accommodate the wishes of the community. But all I have to say is this is a great project. Like I said, I live around the corner. I've been out here thirty years. I'm a senior myself and, um, this is just, uh, a use that seniors have. It's very attractive and I wholly support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Uh, the next person I have is Yvette Angresh. I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
No, you actually did an excellent job. Uh, you're correct. Okay, my name is Yvette Angresh. I live in Kane and Trace. Um, I had the, um, honor to meet Ms. Dorothy on the bus tour, uh, to tour the new homes that she's trying to build in South Fulton. I did, um, I, I think those homes is something that we need to bring to South Fulton as far as us being able to be more modern. We get a lot of, I mean, we're, we're bringing a lot of the jobs, the warehouses are here, but our homes pretty much are stagnant with, you know, pretty much the same builders, the same style. But this particular home is a totally different style. It's not, when you look at it, it's not one of those huge gigantic homes. It's built more of a cottage style with a lot of, a lot of, uh, room on the inside. Also, it has the modern EV charging station, um, the paved driveways, also the iron doors, which are pretty much gonna be standard with the home to my understanding. So I think the look that it has for the community is going to definitely bring a different, um, diversity to our, uh, community. So I, I like the look of the homes and I think it's something that we need when we're moving and trying to grow South Fulton. And that's all.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comment. Uh, the- Thank you so much. I appreciate your comment. Uh, the next one is going to be Phyllis E. Um, her last name, your last name is not there. What is the last name?
Turner.
Turner. Okay, you're up.
Good evening. Um, I have a couple of comments. I think uh if I'm not mistaken, Versailles is off of uh New Hope Road, if I'm not mistaken. And I live in Madison Trace subdivision, so I'm uh as close to being directly across from the proposed development as um uh probably much closer than someone in Versailles. But be that as it may, we recently had a traffic study done. Or someone called for the traffic study. It was done. And the traffic study, the the police officers positioned themselves um about a half mile in from Enen Road and a half mile in from Campbellton Road. So that the, 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 the study did not accurately take into consideration or take into account the traffic that goes from Wallace at Enen to Wallace at Campbellton. It um, it it cut off because there were streets that are outside of where they were, where traffic was coming in and it was not being considered. That's uh, that's one thing. And then to the other point, I've our meetings, I've been in four meetings. And I think that in the last meeting, which was held at the church on Campbellton Road, there were uh some designs that were presented that were hardy plank designs. And not, in none of the other presentations had that been presented. And so the question arose, well, are these going to be brick homes or are they going to be hardy plank homes? And
Okay.
We have been, would not be brick. And so turn has been to maintain, excuse me? Excuse me, I didn't. Oh, you were having issue with static. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're having an issue with static and I just wanted to have clarity on whether or not you're in opposition to this or you're for this?
I am in opposition as the plan is being presented. I'm not in opposition to the development. I'm in opposition to what's being presented. Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just want staff to note that we're, where we've moved on to um comments in opposition. Are there any real, are there any comments for, we're, we're still finishing our comments for the development and then we'll hear all opposition. And I want, I want you to be heard, but I just want to make sure that we're not missing anyone that's for it. And then we can start with you for opposition because we missed some of your comments because it was going in and out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Staff is, are there any more comments for?
Yes, we have one, this Belma Head.
Okay, let's, let's, let's finish our comments for and then we can move on to opposition.
Okay, we have about four more minutes to do comments for if that are in favor. So um, Belma Head is next.
I'm sorry. I, I raised my hand prematurely. I'm opposed. So I will wait.
Okay, Barbara Lanfair. Barbara Lanfair?
I'm here.
Okay, yes. If you are in favor, you can go ahead and speak.
I am in favor. My name is Barbara Lanfair and I'm a Realtor in the area. And as I've, I've been in the industry now nearly twelve years and I've watched Atlanta grow and South Fulton grow and everything else. And as I'm working with my clients, we're looking for houses of the quality of house that Mrs. Crowley is uh is presenting for the community to be in our community. We see these houses in other places and other areas of Atlanta and that's where the revenue is going. When I was on that bus tour to look at the quality of work of the builder, we went to Brookhaven, we went to Marietta. We went to those areas where those, this builder is building a million-dollar homes and we're proposing to have a similar quality of those houses in our community of South Fulton. I think this is an excellent idea. I think it is something that will bring value to the current homeowners who are in this area. We have a shortage of housing. And although a lot of people don't think so, there is really a, a quality shortage of houses that are in the city as a whole and especially in the city of South Fulton. So I truly support Mrs. Crowley. I applaud her for what she's doing. I wish that we had other homeowners and landowners uh who would look at the total picture of what is the possibility to help grow the city of South Fulton and really make it into what other areas of Atlanta has proven to become. So I, I do applaud you, Mrs. uh Crowley, for what you're doing.
Thank you so much for your comment. I have to, um, I'm gonna read the comment from DS Davis. Uh, Deborah Davis. Um, she is stating, my name is Deborah Davis, President of the Santown Community Association. We have met with Ms. Crowley several times and we support the project. This project meets one of our goals to build a diverse residential base. So many of our retirees who are ready to downsize have to move to either Douglasville or Cobb County. It is not a community for everyone, but there is a market for this type of community. Is that good, Ms. Davis? All right, so her comment has been read. And that is it for the four.
Okay, when we're done hearing comments for, we'll move on to comments um in opposition. And can we move, move right on to that community member that was speaking who cut out? Sorry.
That would be um Phyllis Turner?
Yes, Ms. Phyllis. And then also anyone who is in opposition now would be a good time to raise your hand so you can be called on by staff.
Madam Chair, i-if I could, uh before we proceed with the opposition, I just want to one more time verify um via email that we have not received any additional comments. Um, as you know, this has been um a project that's been um under consideration since 2020 and there is a great deal of um interest in terms of how this is gonna get developed. And I'm looking at one comment now. Uh, but that is in. Okay, so it looks like those are all the comments that I have related to projects that would be in favor of.
Okay, thank you. And I, I do see in the chat, I do see a community member asking how to raise their hand. Um, Mr. Hall, could you explain quickly how, how people raise their hands for anyone who does not know?
Uh, certainly, if, if I actually know. Um,
Okay.
I believe it's in the reaction, yeah, the reaction uh icon and the bottom icon said, has a hand sign that says, raise hand.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Jones. If you can just ask those whose hands are up, um, uh if they've already spoken to bring their hand, their hands down. Uh, there's a button, lower, lower, lower hand. It says, raise hand or lower hand.
Yes, thank you. That's, that's a good point. So everyone, take your hand down if you've already spoken and anyone in opposition to this development, please raise your hand and you will be called on.
Shall I continue?
Yes, please.
Yes, Ms. Phyllis, you can go.
Okay, and I was about to get to the point that growth does not to equal destruction of the current integrity of a community, of an already established community for the sake of growth. And as I said, I'm not in opposition to the development. I'm in opposition to the requested zoning. I understand she's moved on from uh requests for cup zoning to R4, which again, um, that particular zoning would open the door for, it would set a precedent and that could destroy the integrity of the community that we're trying to maintain. I've been there for thirty years, but I've been there for twenty-two years. And this, I'm now retired and this was my retire, this was my retirement community. The home that I purchased in Madison Trace. This is my retirement home. And I purchased a retirement home in a community that was quiet and not that I oppose growth or the development, as I've said, at the risk of being um redundant. But growth does not have to equal the destruction of the current integrity of, of the community as it now stands. And so with having that number of houses and not having an accurate traffic study because you can make numbers say what you want them to say or show what you want them to show, I, 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 I raise that issue as to how far are we willing to go to manipulate the, the facts so that they get us what we want in the end? So let, let's have a fair tra, an accurate traffic study. And let's look at um the type of zoning that would maintain the integrity of the community as it now is. Those are my comments.
Thank you for those comments. Um, the next person is going to be Naima Gilier.
Uh, just a moment. I don't know if, um, I just came on, so I do not know whether or not the project I'm, I'm really interested in has been uh talked about or not. I believe somebody told me, no.
It is not.
Okay.
This is the first item on the agenda, so you are good.
Okay, so thank you. I'll take my hand down.
Uh, the next person is going to be listed as OBO. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. A O B O O? Hello? Okay, I guess not. So we can move on with the comments.
I'm Alethia Boone. Are, are you able to? Good evening, good evening, everyone. I'm Alethia W. Boone. Honorable members of the Council, the Planning Committee, the Mayor, and all interested persons. I'm very happy to have heard the previous comments. However, I live at twenty-one sixty-five Wallace Road directly across from this proposed development. I am not in uh a po-opposition to development, period, but I'm in opposition to this particular development because of one word. That word is density. I do not feel that twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-two homes directly on this street will be of any benefit to anyone ultimately. All of those who have spoken in reference to liken the zone, fine, great, but you don't live across the street from twenty-two ten Wallace Road. You don't see the buses, the people, all the traffic that comes and the accidents that occur from time to time. I simply feel that this will have a negative impact upon the established community, a community that has been here down through the years that we have tried to maintain. I'm not one of these thirty, thirty-five-year persons who's been here, but I have definitely supported what goes on in this area. Now, I'm not gonna make it long because there are other people who want to speak, I'm sure. This is a two-lane street. Nobody's gonna widen the street. The, the uh lane that they're talking about bringing, of course, there are people who were respected and people who were not respected. The signs that have been put up for traffic to stop, they are respected by some and they're not respected by others. Please, please, consider those of us who live on this street. Not those who live in other areas, other subdivisions, out of this immediate area. We who live in Wentz, Skyview, Happy Valley, Madison Trace, we have a direct concern because all of those people emptied into Wallace Road. The people now who are going to the public grocery store come off Mead Road and cut through Wallace Road. Please consider this for us. I am definitely opposing this development because of the density. Fewer people, so I'm certain will make it better. If you look at twenty-six people with just two cars in each, each household, look how many additional cars that ain't. I'm not gonna be in it longer, but I oppose it on those grounds of density. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. You want them? Uh, Belma Head?
Yes.
Did you want to make a comment?
I do. I've lived in the area for fifty years. I live on Skyview Drive. And the traffic situation on Wallace Road is horrible. They set up the traffic study late Saturday afternoon. And they put it so that it only encompassed Madison Trace and the few houses in between before they ever got up to Daytona and Happy Valley. So the study would not reflect the four hundred-plus cars that come up and down or even the three hundred-plus cars that come out of Woodside Hills. We got stop signs. They don't stop for the stop signs. The walkers are not safe on the street because they're speeding. So I too purchased my home with retirement in mind. I have friends that live in houses where you can hear conversations from next door because the houses are so close together. One question I'd like to raise, you said that this particular piece of property is surrounded by R3. How come we can't keep it R3 if that's the majority? I am for expansion, but not on Wallace Road when Wallace Road cannot accommodate what is being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next commenter will be Louise Talbert. You have about five minutes.
Oh, yeah.
And Stacy Reynolds is next. If I'm permitted.
Hello. Um, my name is Louise Talbert. I live at fifty-three ten Happy Valley Circle. I've been in this community over forty years. Uh, I was one of the first uh to observe several subdivisions being built in our area. And I speak in opposition to Z twenty-two dash zero zero seven. And I'll, before I give the reason why I'm opposing this, I would like to say that Ms. Crowley have not met with us concerning the R4 zoning. She has met with us on the CUP zoning. So a lot of our neighbors had not had the opportunity to express our concerns to her concerning the R4 zoning. And also the R4 zoning, one of the reasons the R4 zone allows for a subdivision density which is not consistent with any other subdivision on and off Wallace Road. R2 and R3, someone mentioned R3 is around, is the main, the zoning that we have at present. And I uh wondering why can't it be R2 even R3, which is consistent with the neighborhood? And it's simple allows an R4 zoning just because the developer wished to pack, and I mean pack, twenty-six homes on twelve acres of land. And doing that, that is detrimental to our property value and is not in the best interest of our community. The community is opposed to the de-restricted property being introduced. The community is opposed to the D-restricted property being introduced into this community. Our concern is that limited property ownership to be fifty-five-plus affects the resale value and leaves the real possibility of a subdivision full of vacant homes, which drag down the marketability of the community. There are real traffic concern, as mentioned before, on Wallace Road that have not been addressed and which need to be addressed before zoning changes or any property occurs on Wallace Road. And fourth, this is being pushed very hard by a handful of people onto the community. The fact that the commission is taking this up today was even a surprise to our community. We had just found out of this morning about the meeting that's happening now. And I believe that was not an accident, an incident. I'm in favor of high-quality development on Wallace Road. Development that is consistent with, for example, consistent with Madison Trace. But we are not in favor of a questionable high-density D-restricted development as outlined in Z-twenty-two-oh-oh-seven. Therefore, I know that Wallace Road is only a two-lane road and already accommodates traffic from many subdivisions and school traffic and traffic of the safety of the protections are major concern. Traffic jam, jams are at Wallace Road and Hamilton Road intersection. And traffic jams at Wallace Road and Union Road intersection are routine. And they are often being blocked by traffic from four different schools. Therefore, I urge you to disapprove of proposed rezoning from recent meetings and discussion with neighbors. I know these concerns are shared by the overwhelming majority of the various subdivision in the neighborhood of Wallace Road. Thank you for listening and thank you uh for having this discussion so our community can know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
My name, my name is Anthony Fulton, and I'm just trying to figure out how I could raise my hand. I'm working this from my phone.
I'm not sure how you will pull it off from your cell phone, but give me just a second, okay? I'm gonna, okay.
And Madam Chair, just uh um something for the commission to consider. As you know, we have a full agenda tonight, and we certainly wanna hear from um everyone who is speaking on any of these items. Um, but we probably should consider uh making sure that we are timely with responses. Uh, and I would uh just offer as a recommendation for the planning commission to consider to limit comments to one minute, since we have so many people and we may have multiple people wanting to discuss different items.
Okay, um, have we, are we out of time for opposition, for comments in opposition?
We have about one minute and thirty seconds for Ms. Stacy Reynolds.
For Ms. Stacy Reynolds?
Yeah, it's gonna be the last comment, but I'm gonna look for the answer for Anthony Fulton.
Yeah, and if if Mr. Anthony, if there's time, then after Stacy, Ms. Stacy leaves her comment, perhaps you can go ahead, but let's move forward. Um, we have a minute and thirty, sounds like for comments in opposition.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is Stacy Reynolds. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I won't take long at the uh risk of being redundant. I am at twenty-one seventy-five Wallace Road, so I too am directly across the street from the area that's in question, along with Ms. Boone. And um although I I really do appreciate Ms. Crowley's dedication to considering the concerns of everyone involved um in the residence here, I am still of the opinion that twenty-six houses is just a bit much for the twelve acres. Although I'm I'm grateful that we went down from thirty to twenty-six. And I'm just hoping that with a little bit more research and investigation that we can come up with a a solution that is more conducive to what's currently in the um neighborhood in terms of spacing. I also have the same concerns uh as traffic, as others have mentioned. But again, the the density of that is something that's extremely concerning to me, being that I am literally directly across the street from it. I have lived here forty years, and it it breaks my heart to actually know that change is coming, even though I know it's inevitable. But whatever change does come, I would love it if it was more conducive to what we already have in place. And thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have time for Mr. Anthony?
Yes.
Okay, let's move forward with that.
Yeah, I wanna thank everyone. Um, in reference to supporting of growth and development in our community, I am for that. But on the other hand, I support and stand behind those of us who have been in this community forty, fifty, and sixty years. Not opposed to development or growth, but what is being presented is not really fitting for our community. I have some bullet points that I've written down that I really would have liked to go in detail, but I know time is of the essence. And we can live by um the points that I make, you can probably understand where I'm coming from or imagine what I would like to say. One, in reference to zoning, nothing less than R-two, R-three. Uh, no more than twenty to twenty-four homes, and twenty-four homes is stretching it. In reference to the fifty-five and older community, um, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the fifty-five and older community, but I think it be, it can be advertised fifty-five and older are welcome instead of trying to do just a segment of houses for fifty-five and older. Um, my next point is the traffic study, which is the, which is the true deal breakup um about this all because uh traffic is horrendous and, like someone indicated early, we got four to five hundred cars coming up here a day. And that is absolutely ridiculous to bring on so much more in this community. And thinking about this community with traffic, their elderly is like Ms. Boone and others that are backing out their driveway onto Wallace Road at a blind side that is extremely dangerous. And if you even do the traffic study and go back into the history of of Eden Road to Hamilton Road and account the accidents on this one strip, it's ridiculous. Um, the next thing is creating sidewalks for those that wanna walk here has not been able to be created because of the spacing of the streets and the two lanes. In reference to house sizes, um, I don't, I don't, I don't believe we should have anything less than two thousand square feet in our community. Okay? In reference to density and setback, I don't think that there should be a house built without a hundred-foot setback. If you look at our community, all these houses are set back, but to have this community sitting twenty yards from the curb, twenty feet from the curb, I think is truly unacceptable. I'm not against development. I would like to see Ms. Crowley succeed, but I have to also look at what we feel is fitting for this community. And I'm not saying fifty-five and older, and they don't need to have a place to live, but it might not be conducive for this particular area. Speaking of Wallace Road, and I hear a lot of individuals have spoken this evening, and those individuals that have spoken are not within the direct effect of what will happen if this project succeeds. Okay, um, people on New Hope, okay.
I think we are out of time for opposition. Um, would you like to cap that real quick, Mr. Anthony?
Yes, I would like to see Ms. Crowley succeed, but I would like to see the things that we're requesting um come to fruition as a partnership with Ms. Crowley and make this work. But the things that are, that are being presented on that end still have not come to the full tuition of what we want, especially with traffic, density, zoning, and the number of houses.
Okay, thank you. And that will be um the end of our comments. I will now entertain a motion to close the public comment. Public hearing?
Commissioner Jones, I uh make a motion that we we close public hearing, make public, public comments, excuse me.
Commissioner Jones, you were correct the first time. The motion should be to close the public hearing.
Public hearing, thank you, sir.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Hadley, I second.
Okay, staff, did you get that?
Yes, Commissioner Hadley was the individual who seconded the motion.
Great. Properly moved and seconded. Staff, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Madam Chair, we have our eyes.
Thank you. And with that, commissioners, um, go ahead and raise your hand. Um, and staff, if you could just assist me if I seem confused about technology. Um, let's go ahead and uh commissioners, come forward with your questions.
Madam Chair, before we do. Yeah.
So they let it speak.
You, everyone, that's not making a statement.
Director Hall, what was that?
I was saying, before we um proceed with the questions from the commissioners, can we please have everyone from the public to lower their hand?
That would be helpful, yes. Please lower your hand if you are not a commissioner. I will ask, I will ask my questions first, just for the sake of um efficiency, um, because I'm not seeing any hands yet, and I do have a few questions for the applicant.
Marie Jackson, you have to lower your hand.
Um, so I'm just gonna move forward with my questions first this time around, uh, for the sake of time, and then.
And then Commissioner Jones has his hand raised after you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm for, I'm for some reason not seeing your hand raised. I'm, staff, you're gonna have to, I'm sorry, I'm not super tech savvy, so I'll ask my question. Commissioner Jones, I can see you raising your hand.
Yeah, I'm on as the Gathering Baptist Church. I'm trying to switch it back to the name, so.
That would, okay, that explains a lot. Got it now, okay? Um, I'm actually on as my son's name. I apologize. Um, so I heard our talk of other amenities other than pathways or trails. Are there going to be playgrounds? Um, I know this is for a community for elders um and also families. Um, so I'm just wondering about what other amenities will be there.
The amenities that are, the amenities that are going to be at the Wallace Road project, we're going to have a pavilion. We'll have a fire pit for gathering. There will be a walking trail. Um, and there will be a community garden, but not a playground.
Okay, will, will there be sidewalks throughout the neighborhood?
Yes, there will be sidewalks throughout the neighborhood and along Wallace Road.
And uh precisely how many houses per acre? I don't mean gross, but I mean um, you know, how how many houses per acre, like in terms of, you you get what I'm saying?
Right, it's two-point, uh, it's two-point-one, two-point-two houses per acre.
Two-point-two houses per acre and then green space and and garden, and, okay. Um, and then I'm just seeing in the comments and what I'm hearing from the public is an interest in R-three rather than R-four, and I'm just wondering, um, did you ever consider that, or is there, what is your reasoning for R-four?
The reasoning for the R-four is our, with the engineer, when the engineer went in to do the positioning of the homes, the layout and everything with the spacing that we have, and to be able to give the community what they wanted, they wanted a larger, they they didn't want the smaller blueprints for the cottages. They wanted the largest, larger homes, larger spaces for them. So we went with the R-four and able to give the community what they had requested for a larger home.
This is Michael Gabitis. I'm the civil engineer working with Orphe Crowley. And if you consider the density for the R-three, which is eighteen thousand square feet, and you look at, you divide it by the number of acres for this lot, that would actually give you twenty-eight units per acre. So we're kind of in line with the lower density um zoning.
Okay, thank you. Um, that, that completes my questions for the moment. I'm gonna call on Commissioner Perry, followed by Commissioner Jones.
So I wanna go back and and talk about the R-three zoning and R-four zoning. So I just, I just wanna make sure that, that I understand what you're saying. So you're saying that a, as the project is presently proposed, that the density of the homes is actually um will fit in R-three zoning?
Will fit on R-three zoning or R-four zoning?
No, that, well, I'm saying what your engineer just stated is that the actual density that you're proposing is better than R-three zoning. I- is that correct?
Yes, it's better than R-three zoning because the community wanted us, they wanted larger homes. They were not uh pleased with the size of the homes that we were proposing with the CUP. And so we decided, decided that we wanted to, you know, include them, include their comments and suggestions and go with an R-four.
So this, this question is for staff. So uh uh Director Hall, so with the commission, conditions that uh staff has proposed limiting it to twenty-six homes, would that in fact, no matter if Ms. Crowley or somebody after her came with this zoning, that they in fact would have to have the same kind of density that it, that would fall into uh R-three or better because of the, the no more than twenty-six homes?
Uh, Commissioner, as you are fully aware, each zoning district related to residential development has a minimum lot size. That minimum lot size along maximum or minimum maximum densities necessitates, directs, and outlines the number of units that can, that can be developed. So the statement as it reads, related to the condition says, shall be restricted to no more than twenty-six single-family dwellings. They don't have to be all twenty-six. Um, generally like to know the number be, and for it to accompany a site plan so that we have fully vetted and understood what the proposed unit count is going to be. So if the applicant decides to sell this to another person that comes after her, this condition restricts it to be based upon the R-four zoning district and its regulations, no more than twenty-six single-family dwelling units.
Okay, so, so technically, they could build uh a greater density and just leave, leave more green space, and they would be compliant.
When you're speaking of building more density, they are limited based upon the lot sizes, the minimum lot sizes in the subdivision. You have to also understand that this site, twelve acres plus, because you have the number of units that you're proposing, you have to, you you're gonna take away the ability to build with some of the roads. You will take away the ability to construct and build houses because of the amenities that were discussed. You will take away the ability to fully utilize the site because of the required setbacks. Okay, so they are confined based upon the total square footage and the development standards for the specific zoning district that they are requesting, and in this case, it is R-four.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Perry?
Yep.
Okay, you have further questions?
The Commissioner Jones does.
Yeah, I was gonna call on Commissioner Jones next.
Am I up?
You're up.
Okay, yeah, that my, my questions were answered regarding the the why R-four. Um, I noticed uh Um, I noticed, uh, and I'm taking copious notes here, I'm looking at the comments, I've listened to what everyone is saying. Um, in the packet that we have, maybe this is for Director Hall, I didn't see the photos from, uh, 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 of the proposed housing. We use, that used to get um, some examples of that. Um, and so while that answer is coming, um, I just wanna ask this. Um, I noticed that there were several people who lived, like, on the street on Wallace Road, um, who seemed to be against. And there seems to be those who live in the vicinity or in the area. Um, some of them were on this bus tour. And I'm hearing residents that are like, uh, like, I believe, I, I heard Ms. uh, Boone say that she was, she's directly across the street, and uh, that, that, uh, they were not, that, 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 that they were not either notified or they have not had a meeting, uh, with Ms. Crowley. Um, and I'm wondering, h- how did you notify the residents to get on this bus to go on a tour? Um, because it seems that several of these were not those fifteen persons, uh, that were on the bus tour. Seems like they are not the ones, uh, that are, uh, necessarily against it. Uh, neither are the, the ones that are directly impacted.
We did send out, um, e, uh, notifications. We have a landing page, we have a website that we posted, um, we posted the, the tour. We also spoke with, um, I spoke with Mr. Fulton, I gave him a flyer, once it was completed, and to assimilate out to Ms. Boone and the other ones that he had been meeting with, because we had a meeting prior to um, the tour. And, uh, so we did, I think, I, I think the, um, the city council, uh, I mean, the, uh, the councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Rowland, the district also sent out a newsletter notifying the community of the, um, bus tour. So we did send out flyers, and we, uh, sent out emails to notify those that, uh, we were in contact with, that I had contact, direct contact information for, that we would be having the tour. Um, Ms. Mabel, um, Martin, and the other ones that are the ones that have been in the meetings and have communicated directly with me. I shared that information, and they told me that they would be sharing that information with the community members that they, that are in opposition to it, to let them know the status and what has happened, and where they would be going, and when we had the, um, tour scheduled for.
Ms. Crowley, perhaps you can answer this, that my, my first question was samples of the, uh, the types of homes that, uh, that you're talking about. Certainly those, the several of the people who were for it, and that were on the bus tour saw that. Um, but we as Commissioners, we don't have that in our packet. Um, is it possible, uh, was it given to staff, and staff, is it possible for us to, to see that this evening?
Yes, the applicant did provide renderings, and I can pull up those renderings to show, uh, what the proposed um, houses are going to look like. I will just remind the Commissioners, renderings are not necessarily
The finished product, what, what's gonna actually be?
And what we can hold the applicant to as construction gets underway. Uh, it's more so related to the site plan, which is why we attach it as a, uh, part of the discussion and reference it as it is noted, I think, in one of these, um, slides and/or the conditions within the staff report, but I'm happy to pull up the renderings that we have for this project to share with them.
Do that, please, Mr. Director. Thank you. And once that's done, Madam Chair, that was, that was the, uh, the, the end of my, balance of my questions.
Okay, great, and I'm looking for Commissioner Perry, I see your hand raised. Again, do you have another question?
No, I just dropped it.
This is, uh, Michael Gabitis, the civil engineer, uh, working with Dorothy. Um, part of the design process for this area, since it's in the Soundtown, Sandtown community, uh, is there, there is a architectural review with the community, so I just wanted to, uh, point that out.
I'm sorry, did you say there was an architectural review, or there will be one?
There is, it's, it's part of the zoning ordinance, uh, there's an architectural review process. And it's part of the, uh, analysis in the, um, in the, um, the city's report.
And that will happen after this process?
That's correct. It'll happen during the land disturbance permit.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Does anyone else have a question?
Yes, this is Commissioner Wal- Walters, just two quick questions. Um, first, for the, um, Ms. Crowley, um, in terms of the, the outreach, and I want to commend you for, I've heard that the outreach was, um, on this project, and it's positive, the positive reception to the, the type of outreach that you did do. Um, how many people attended the meetings? Like, in total, how many people actually came and provided input on this project? If you have that information. And then the second question is, has a developer, um, an actual developer um, to, to do the construction been identified?
The, the number of, and the first meeting, uh, the first meeting that we, that was held at Barrington Trace, we had over, I think it was about thirty people in person, and fifty people were on, uh, Zoom. The next meeting that was held, we had, I think there were, were about the, we had, I think there were about forty people in attendance. The next meeting we had, there, it's been about, about the same consistency, anywhere from forty to forty-five that have been, uh, in attendance, and then I did have some one-on-one meeting uh, with, uh, Mr. Fulton and Ms. Martin and other ones, so it's been about, pretty much about that, that number. We have the developer to do the, the construction, did you say? Have they been, I'm sorry, the builder?
Yes, the builder, I mean, the builder. I'm sorry, the builder.
The builder, we did go out to see the builder, some of the homes that the builder had built, and so we have identified the builder.
And is, and is there, is there a commitment with that builder in place right now?
A commitment, uh, you mean a contract?
Yes.
Okay, we, because we have not gone through the full process, we haven't, we, we have a verbal commitment, but we don't have a, uh, written commitment.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the, those responses.
Uh, Madam Chair, I was, this is Derek Hall. Me, Development. Um, it might be quicker if we ask the engineer, if the engineer or the developer has renderings, uh, the proposed renderings.
Okay.
Yeah, and they can, um, we can allow them to share the screen, and they can put them up.
Yeah, that would be great. Do, do either of you have the renderings that we could, that you could share on the screen, so everyone could see it?
Yes, give me one second. We're gonna give me one second. Michael, you might have to do this. I'm, I'm not savvy when it, I don't know.
And I have, I have one more question while we're waiting for that, um. Ms., Ms. Crowley, uh, since the opposition is primarily regarding density, um, you know, depending on what the Commission chooses to do, would you consider working with the community to even lessen the density? Um, in terms of traffic concerns and aesthetics? Um, I'm just curious what your response to that would be.
Have reduced the density, um, down to everything that the community has, you know, asked, other than one house per acre. We're unable to build on one house per acre in the given, given, with the, with the cost and everything. And if, we're, we're not able to go any further down than this, to consider the cost of, and where the economy is right now, it's almost impossible to go any further.
Okay, thank you for your response. Commissioners, just so I'm clear while we're waiting, does anybody else have a question for the applicant? Um, just so we utilize our time. I think if everyone's finished, that's fine, we'll just wait, just wanna make sure.
I have a question. On, this is Commissioner Williams. On this, the site plan shall be in general conformity with the conceptual site plan dated November the third, twenty twenty-two. That was just a couple days ago. Um, where is this conceptual site plan? Is it, um, available online?
Commissioner, the conceptual site plan is the plan that was shown in the presentation.
Okay, okay. So, okay. Because I'm just looking at this date, and I was like, was something revised recently or something? Okay, I understand now.
Right, and as a part of the presentation, I mentioned that after having several community meetings or community meetings, several may be relative, depending upon who is talking about it, the applicant sent over to staff a revised site plan. The initial unit count was fifty-four or fifty-two units, and they brought that number down to what is being requested here. I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-six. Um, what was the, uh, let me ask the applicant, what was the initial proposed unit count?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. From thirty-two to twenty-six. So that's why you have a revised site plan.
So I have a question. If we're looking at our, our four zoning, and she's talking about twenty, twenty...
Point of order. I'm so sorry, Mr. Fulton, but this is a legal proceeding, so we have to give, we can't take comments or questions at this point. Um, but can you put it in the, um, can you put it in the chat for me, please? Um, we have to follow certain guidelines so that, um, it's all legal, but if you put it in the chat, maybe someone on staff can answer that question? Because we are gonna have to move on to, you know, the next item, as well as Director Hall was pointing out, we have um, a number of items to look at. But I do want you to feel heard, so please do put it in the chat. We just are done taking, um, community comments.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we are no longer taking public comments related to this particular item, because the Commission has closed the public hearing.
Right, that, that's what I, that's what I was saying. I wasn't sure if he could, if he could text it in and me, I, you know.
The public hearing comment period has been closed.
Okay.
The only discussion that will occur is between the Commissioners, staff, and the applicant.
Yeah, and the Commissioners are reading the comments in the, in the chat, so it's, I, I'm just saying that it might influence, yeah.
This is Commissioner Jones, just wanted to see, uh, if we did have the rendering.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Is the rendering coming? Ms. Crowley, are you able to get that?
I'm, I'm not real savvy with this, though. I've got, um, our agent is pulling them up, because I don't know how to show it from mine. You know, I don't know how to get out of, from, from the Zoom that you guys.
I, I have sympathy for you. I understand I'm not also very well versed by other, through screen share tool. Could someone explain to Ms. Crowley how to share her screen?
Okay, uh, let me do this. I, I think I, I think I can do a share. I don't know how to close it out, though. It's so, let me see if I can do it. Yeah, it says I can't share the screen while the participant is sharing, so. Um.
We will unshare the screen, so that you can share it. You can share it now.
Thank you.
That was the actual slide deck, so just click to the image to your left, and it will show on the screen.
It was showing, but I no longer see it. Um, do I just, yeah, I don't see it anymore. Just hang on one second, let me. Okay, so it doesn't allow me to move it?
Just click to the, to the screen on the image.
Thank you.
On the image you want to select, to the left of the screen.
Ms. Crowley, I, I have the slide up for you from when you presented.
Natasha, is it you?
Do you see it?
I can see it.
Yes. Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Hadley. I have another question, if I can ask while they're preparing the slide.
Ms. Crowley, I have it up for you.
Yeah, can you just advance the slides, please? Just keep going down. I think it's the fifth or sixth slide.
Just tell me when to stop.
Keep going. You can go back up to the, the previous slide.
Here?
Yes. Now, are these the current renderings that you're proposing for the houses?
You're muted, Ms. Crowley.
Ms. Crowley, you're actually muted right now. Did you hear Director Hall's question?
These were the original renderings that were, I'm sorry, this is Natasha Johnson, her, um, real estate agent. These were the original renderings. Those have subsequently changed based on the zoning. Um, we do have samples of the builders' homes, because we are trying to, um, get, ensure that we have, um, you know, we, so you can see the quality of work. That's one of the reasons we did the bus tours, we're at, as well, so that you can see the quality of work. I can share with you on my screen some of the photographs, some, some of the sample homes that he has built. Um, and the renderings are being reworked based on the new zoning, and the zoning came as a result of the last committee meeting, and therefore, our architects are still working on recreating the renderings based on the new zoning. So yes, you will have ranch-style cottage homes, as well as two-story, um, uh, single-family homes, uh, on the frontage piece of Ro- Wallace Road, and cottage-style homes in the internal part of the, of the, that is what we are proposing. Those renderings have not completely been done yet. Um, I'm sorry, I was trying to get, uh, pictures up for Ms. Crowley while we, while she was trying to, so I can share those if you'd like.
I do have the, uh, website where we have some of the renderings on the website, so if I can share my, if you allow me to share my screen now, I think I can show the renderings that we have. Uh, some of the rendering, renderings that we have from, um, from the builder.
Okay, Director Hall, could we assist her in sharing her screen?
I pressed share, okay.
I think you should just be able to go ahead, Ms. Crowley.
Are you able to see, are we-
Yes, we are able to see that. Well done.
Thank you. Okay, this, this is a cottage-style home, and this is one of the homes that they saw when we went on the tour that the builder has built. And I think this is the, this is the home of the coach for the Atlanta, I mean, the Hawks, I think, the, the Hawks, back-to-ball coach. This is the house that he built for him. This is one of the houses that they saw when we went on the tour. The, and these are some of the renderings of the homes that, that they're working with now due to the new zoning. And these are some of the old renderings of, of the proposed zoning that we, we submitted earlier. The pavilion is one of the amenities that we'll have there along with the fire pit, the walking trail, and the community garden. So Commissioner Perry, did, is, did you need to see, did you, would you like to see more? Because she's trying to download those now.
I think that was Commissioner Jones who was asking.
Okay, Commissioner.
Yeah, that, that, that was me. And if these are the, the renderings, then, then, then that satisfies my question. The first set of renderings you said were changed, and so now we're looking at the actual, as close to what will be proposed, right?
As close to, yes, that's correct. The first renderings were for the, those were the ones that we were, when we first got started. And because of the density, we went back, when we got the R4, we're looking at the R4 zoning so that we can, you know, reconfigure the homes to fit that, those, that zoning.
Okay.
Okay, this is, this is the builder, but the home that you were, that we were looking at up there that was rather large, and I couldn't hear who you said it was the home of. Those homes are much larger than the homes that we are talking about in this development, though, correct? Like this home right here that I'm looking at? It, we're, we're talking about smaller homes than this. Is that correct?
Definitely. They'll be smaller scale. There'll be a smaller-scale home, but these are the homes, these are the, we took them on the tour to see the builder, the type of homes that the builder builds.
Okay, so these materials will be utilized, but it will be less square footage?
It'll be a smaller scale, but the same type of materials, yes.
Okay. Commissioners, does anyone have any more questions before we move on to the vote?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Commissioner Hadley?
Oh, Commissioner Hadley, go ahead.
Yes, question about the zoning. The way that it is zoned and with staff's recommendation, would that restrict any other applicant, including this one, from building any type of multi-dwelling establishment, multi-dwelling homes? Can they come back with duplexes or townhomes if this goes through?
The R4 zoning district is for single-family dwellings.
Okay, and has there been any consideration by the applicant or anyone else to this senior living requirement? I didn't hear that in the presentation, but I've heard the members of the residents speak to it.
Commissioner, what's your question again?
In reference to the elderly requirement, the fifty, you know, restriction on the deed. This is something that was mentioned by the, by the residents. I didn't hear it, I didn't hear it, I didn't hear any type of comment to it about the staff or applicant.
Right. And the reason why you didn't hear that from staff, Commissioner, is because age is not a land use regulation. So that is a preference of the developer, and this proceeding today is the request to rezone based upon the intensity of the land use. And so the applicant is requesting to change the zoning from AG1 to R4. That has no bearing on who is going to be the final occupant.
All right, thank you. That was it for me.
Okay, and with that, I will entertain a motion to approve, defer, or deny this item. Entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Jones. I'm trying to give you a motion, but I'm having-
Okay. What motion are you trying to give?
I'm, I'm one moment for me.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll go forward. This is Commissioner, Commissioner Hadley. I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff conditions. Z22-007 at 2210 Wallace Road.
This is Commissioner Walters. I'd like to second the motion for approval.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Staff, did you get that? Commissioner Hadley made the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Parks, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Nay.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Nay.
Commissioner Wettley?
Can I have someone repeat the motion?
It was a motion to approve.
With condition?
Yay.
Commissioner Wettley. Okay. Sorry, what was, nay?
Aye. Yes.
Ms. Parks, can you repeat that back to me? I know that we we had two eyes and-
No, I think we have more eyes than that.
Yes, we have.
I'm sorry, it's hard for me to hear a little bit, so if Ms. Parks could repeat it back.
Matter of fact, we have eyes, five eyes and two nose.
Okay. So the eyes have it?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Moving on to item two, public hearing to consider, Z22-014. The applicant Hardy Real Estate Group is requesting a rezoning from AG1 to M1 Light Industrial. And with that, I will pass it off to you, staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Derek Hull reporting on behalf of the Community Development Regulatory Affairs Department. We're just pulling up the presentation if you just give me a moment. The item before the commission is Z22-014, located on Campbell Drive. The request from the applicant is to rezone the property from AG1 Agricultural zoning district to M1 Light Industrial zoning district to construct a 257,920 square-foot warehouse on five acres of land. Commissioners, you will note that in the initial staff report, we needed to make a correction. The project was listed at 491,000 square feet. This is, in fact, the totality of the proposed warehouse, and there are two warehouses being proposed, one of which is located partially in the city of South Fulton. So you will note that we are making a correction to the information that was listed. Next slide. By way of background information, the project is bounded by North Commerce Drive to the north, Washington Road to the east, Spring Street to the south, and Campbell Drive to the, to the west. The site is currently undeveloped and heavily wooded. The applicant submitted a request in 2021 to the city of South Fulton. That application was subsequently withdrawn. The applicant resubmitted an application and is now proposing a building that is, again, 257,920 square feet. One of the buildings, as you will see in the presentation, is located partially in the city of South Fulton. Next slide. As it relates to the comprehensive plan, the future land use map has identified this area through the activities of the 2021 land use activities as industrial zone. Next slide. The current zoning for the project site is AG1 Agriculture. The proposed zoning, based upon the applicant's request, is M1 or Light Industry. You will notice in this slide that around the entire area that is highlighted, areas that do not have zoning designations are out of the city's jurisdiction. But the star here indicates the current zoning of AG1. The parcels directly to the north and to the south are not within the city of South Fulton. There are properties across Campbell Road that are zoned R3, R3A, AG1. Those parcels are located within the city of South Fulton. To the east, there are properties zoned AG1, R31, and some to the south, AG1, R4, and to the north, apartment or A and C1, those properties are all zoned here in the city of South Fulton. Next slide. This slide shows the location of the project site, as is indicated earlier in the presentation. This is a heavily wooded area, and there is current access off of Campbell Drive. Next slide. The slide before you shows the site plan. And I do apologize for the manner in which you can see the details. If we're able to, we will try to blow up the slide. But in this illustration, you see two buildings, roughly the outlines of two buildings. One building is located in the lower kind of center of this slide. The other building is outlined by a red box. That red box indicates the location that is the city of South Fulton. That is a South Fulton parcel. That area is the area in question related to the proposed zoning. As you can see from this illustration, the building, the area to the west, to the west of the box is city of East Point. The area to the right of the box is in the city of East Point, but the area fully contained within the box is the city of South Fulton. Next slide. As it relates to the analysis of the project, as was indicated earlier, this area in the city of South Fulton is primarily zoned agriculture with some additional residential zoning districts directly to the west of the project site, or to the west. And also, it includes some lower-density residential zoning districts in and around the area. In its current state, the site serves as a buffer between some of the existing heavy industrial uses in nearby East Point. There are some industrial uses close by that are located within the adjacent city. The applicant is proposing to construct one of two buildings between the jurisdictions of the city of South Fulton and the city of East Point. This proposed building creates a series of issues for the city. Namely, when a building is built between two cities, there is an issue of who is to provide the public service. Secondly, the taxation of properties between the two municipalities are different. So the area of the building that's located in the city of South Fulton will have a different property tax rate than the area in East Point. There are also issues of liability. If at some point there are issues related to the issuance of permits and someone is injured, or if there's some other liability issue where the city of South Fulton is at fault or is a party to, we have indistinguishable liability parameters because the building sits in two municipalities. Similarly, if and when it comes to code enforcement regulations and the ability to enforce said regulations, there may be a difference in how to apply the enforcement regulations based upon one municipality versus the next, in addition to understanding who is going to provide the enforcement activities. Number five, as it relates to the permitting, there are different standards for permitting in the city of East Point versus in the city of South Fulton. And with the building being located in two municipalities, there will be an issue regarding who will have the primary right to permit the building within two municipalities. And then finally, there are oftentimes in situations like this conflicting development standards. So in constructing this building, which development standards will have precedent? Will it be the city of East Point, or will it be the city of South Fulton? I've enumerated for you at least six issues related to this proposed project, related to this one building. Now, keep in mind, building number two is fully located in the city of East Point. But this building in question is located between two cities, and we have identified these issues. The applicant is requesting a rezoning. However, these issues have not been resolved with the city of South Fulton. Coupled with the fact that this particular project in its entirety, including the building that is bifurcated between South Fulton and East Point, was approved by the city of East Point in 2021. Now, I contend that if a building is in two jurisdictions and one municipality rezones the building, that that zoning may in fact not be valid because a portion of the building sits within another community. But that rezoning did occur in East Point and was approved in 2021. During that process, there was a great deal of opposition from the city of South Fulton residents. They understood what the proposed uses of the warehouse buildings were going to be, and they voiced their opposition at that time. So taking all this into account, staff cannot generally support the rezoning application, but does recommend to the applicant to reconsider redesigning the building so that the building is completely located within one jurisdiction. This concludes staff's presentation. The slide above shows the staff's reasonings for denial, the recommendations for denial, compatibility with the existing neighborhood, and the- Compatibility with the existing neighborhood and the city's desire to keep the area comprised of low residential densities. Alleviating stand alone zoning parcels in the city of South Fulton, as I went through that slide. There was not a single parcel in the city of South Fulton that had been zoned. M one within this entire area. And then third and most importantly, bifurcating this building between two or more municipalities. As you see, creates unresolved issues related to property tax assessment permitting. Public services, liability enforcement and conflicting development standards. This concludes staff's presentation and I believe the applicant is here. Uh to uh discuss the components of the project.
Thank you Director Hall, um I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Still moved.
Can you say your name just when you just for just for staff?
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hadley, second.
So properly moved in second and Miss Park, so you please call the roll.
Commissioner Hadley. Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon. Commissioner Whittily.
Weatherly, aye.
Madam Chair, we have all eyes.
Thank you, can the applicant come forward and speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, my name is Steve Rothman and I'm an attorney at twenty eight forty nine Paces Ferry Road and I represent the applicant. Uh and he's on with us also, his name is uh or both the company, the 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 principal is Daniel Hannison and he's also on. Um if I could, as I get going, if I could ask Mr. Hall to show the site plan, that might help me describe the project a little bit. Um take a couple minutes on that. Um. But he is correct, this is a site plan where outside of that red box, the city of East Point. Um rezoned that property and in fact a permit has been issued and the development has begun. For the development outside of the city of South Fulton. There's no question. That the East Point activities, whether it was rezoning or permitting, do not. Involve or touch the land that's in within South Fulton, uh so everyone is aware of that. At the time that East Point rezoned this. Uh the East Point council members reached out to the South Fulton council members. Uh in fact, council member Willis's mother. Um lives on an adjoining parcel, so it wasn't just. Police political niceties, it became personal and so uh when Mr. Hall says that um. It was no support from South Fulton residents, there was support. Um buffers were negotiated on the East Port Point portion of the development. And they are being enforced, whether this is approved or not, those buffers are in place. There was no conditions in terms of this for that and so the project is currently under construction. Also, the this land in South Fulton is landlocked. Um Campbell Drive has been um was abandoned by, this portion was abandoned by. South Fulton or Fulton County actually. Long ago and the city of East Point has abandoned this portion portion of Campbell Drive, this is the dead end of Campbell Drive. Um and so if you were to pass the barriers that are up. Uh before construction began, you would have seen a lot of mattresses and tires that were being dumped there, this is. This site is really the location of the old Eastern School Site. Um. As you can see, the South Fulton por- portion. Juts into the property like a tooth, like a single tooth, it's surrounded on three sides. By industrial zoning and I think with all due respect, Mr. Hall's analysis describing the area as. Surrounded by residential leaves out. The point I'm gonna make, which is this is A G one property surrounded. By what's gonna be warehousing. And so the question becomes for this board. Uh and for any land use decision is A G one appropriate? When you're surrounded by zoning that allows warehouses on three sides? And we just believe it's it's. Uh basic that it is not. Uh A G one allows agriculture, a single family house, maybe a church. The concern here is that you can't get to this site. Because there's no road touching the front, a public right of way. And I'm gonna use the directions on the site plan in front of you, above the red box, which is technically to the east, but to the top. You have a stream and a power easement and a very large changing grade. There's not gonna be development, no one's gonna build homes there where it's zoned A G one. Because as this shows, you have streams, a gas line easement and a steep hill. If you go to the left side of the box, that's gonna be warehousing, all of the traffic. All of the pavement is gonna move into East Point up to the warehouse district at Camp Creek Business Center. The trucks will exit to go to two eighty five directly at Washington Road. It's maybe a hundred and fifty yards away. And then you'll pass some gas stations, retail stores and you're at the on-ramp for two eighty five. The Camp Creek Business Center, which is a warehouse district. Um is a larger district and it's got the access designed, so this is moving away from South Fulton, which is to the right. And to the bottom of the of the of the plan that's in front of you. So um so this is a project that we think it just makes sense, it's consistent. To go to industrial and if you want to limit it to warehousing and not manufacturing or something like that, that's fine. But. What we're asking for is consistent with all of the abutting surrounding property. It's consistent with your comprehensive development plan, which recommends industrial. So frankly, we're at a loss as to why the staff report, again respectfully clarifies that. That residential is the intended use here, your land use map designate, your future land use map designates this as industrial. So we think this is consistent with the surrounding uses and that land use map. We did have a a the public meeting, most of the concerns were about traffic. Uh what we can say is that not only is there no driveways or roads. That can take you to the right or towards Campbell Drive or towards South Fulton directly. But there's not even gonna be a sidewalk or a path. That's so there's no connectivity, so a lot of the concerns and we heard some concerns, a lot of them, to tell you the truth. A generalized. Uh hostility to more warehouses in South Fulton, which as we come into this as applicants, we know it. But this is a small piece. It's about fifteen percent of the overall project. And it's not the entire building, but as you can see, a portion of the building, about a third of the building is in. Si- the city of South Fulton, so we're not asking you to set a precedent or break the dam, what we're saying is this. Is that the boundaries of the municipal boundaries are not evenly drawn, there's this funny little jut. Or tooth that goes into East Point and we'd ask that that it that this piece. Be allowed to be developed and used consistently with not only your C D P, but the surrounding properties. We don't think it's good planning to say, no, you need to put a house there. Um Mr. Hall did go through the reasons for his denial and I'd like to go through, he says. First, he says in the staff report compatibility with existing neighborhoods. But again, there's a generous buffer in the each East Point portion of this development. Where the Shoshone uh trail and the and the, you know, the the neighborhoods on the bottom there. Have a buffer and the East Point portion is being developed. And there's also needs to be compatibility with the surrounding property. And then the in that first reason, the city's desire to keep this area comprised of low residential density. So again, the city's comprehensive future land use map designates this as industrial, so we just respectfully disagree. With that rationale. The second one is alleviating sta- zone standalone zoning parcels in South Fulton. As there are no other M one zoning designations within the area. Well, the truth is surrounding this, there's no South Fulton designations because it's zoned in the city of East Point to allow warehouses. So that's a little bit, we believe of a of a head fake, but finally, the concern was that. You're bifurcating a building between two or more municipalities creates unresolved issues like a tax assessment. Permitting public service enforcement and conflicting standards, those exist today. The city limit line is where it is. The tax commissioner is gonna have to figure out how to tax property in the jurisdiction, which frankly, they do. I recently zoned and permitted a building on Roosevelt Highway at White City Road. That was, the building was partially divided between College Park and the city of South Fulton. These unresolved issues exist today, we're not creating them. But what we can do and would make it easier is if down the road, there's an intergovernmental agreement signed between South Fulton and East Point. I don't know that the tax commissioner needs a any kind of guidance on figuring out what's in what jurisdiction. Nine one one responses are the same, but for terms of permitting and deciding what code is involved, all of the codes except for zoning. Are the same life safety codes. And an intergovernmental agreement can allow one jurisdiction to do both jurisdictions analysis or. They can say no, and then one portion of the billing will be submitted to South Fulton and another will be submitted to. Uh East Point. So these unresolved issues are not created by this application, they're there today because the city limit lines are there. If if there's a a a trash dump there, the same question about which police officer responds or who has the responsibility to deal with it. Exists today. And so we're not creating these problems. And what we would like to do is make it easier to develop the parcel and have intergovernmental agreements, but we can't make the city. Of East Point and the city of South Fulton get together. And agree on that, but what we can do is assist in that process during before permitting. And if it happens, it happens and that's great and that's what we did with my other project, so it can happen. I understand, bottom line, there's a big hostility to industrial. And no one wants to open the floodgates and so what we're asking you to consider is that this is a very rare exception. And we'd ask that you not consider just the the hostility and the overall fears. Because if you do that, the consequences on this property owner. With this small piece of H E one and it's just not good land use planning. To to say, to ignore the fact that it's surrounded by warehouses. And to say, keep it, the proper land use here is for a house or a field for growing agriculture. So I think with that, I um I'll just stop there and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you, are there any comments in favor of this development? Staff, are there any comments in favor?
If you are in favor of this project, please raise your hand.
Right, yes. Take your hand down if you are in opposition. Uh and please raise your hand if you are in support.
Oh, I'm in opposition.
Yes, I saw your hand go down. I will, we'll call on you for opposition.
Um, thank you.
I think there is no, I think there are no comments in support, is that correct, staff, would you, would you agree with me on that? She is in opposition, so I just wanted to wait and make sure that there is nobody in support of this project.
Yep, okay, nope, that's it.
I do not see any hands raised in support, so let's move on to opposition. Ms. Gilliard, why don't you go ahead and speak and then anyone who is in opposition to this, please raise your hand so that we can hear you.
In matter of, just a reminder that we have afforded ten minutes. For in in favor of in opposition.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say? Two minutes, did you, is that what you said?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, yes, we have ten minutes for and ten minutes against. Um so just be conscious of that in your comments, I'm not seeing Director Hall, I'm not seeing. A lot of comments coming through, so for now, let's not have a time limit, um but we can employ a time limit if we have to.
Okay, can I begin?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Gilliard.
Okay, okay, my concern. And the truth is throughout, um and and thank you, Mr. Hall for. Um shedding light on um. The problems that could be created just because of two different um jurisdictions, but it's deeper than that. My concern and the truth is that this project would be. The first industrial project that the city of South Fulton will have. That would be next to where people live. That is the biggest concern. More than anything else and unfortunately. All of the other cities in South Fulton have that model. Now, there are some, and this is not about. Um having a violent fear, it's about a public health issue. And it's also about environmental injustice, si- simply because of where those. Warehouses are located throughout Fulton County, they are in South Fulton. Where they are next to where people live, they are not like that in North Fulton. And I do not think that we should start. Out by following what the other cities are doing, now it is really sad. That it is between two jurisdictions, um I think it should be between one, even if. Uh the city of South Fulton and the city of East Point have to sit down and. Um work out some kind of agreement where perhaps. Um there's some annexation and it goes into the city of East Point. Uh unfortunately, that doesn't do anything for the people that live. Close by and one thing that you cannot do is buffer air. So there are air pollution issues from trucks and warehouses. And there's a lot of research and information out there where there wasn't a couple of years ago. But there is now because of the expansion of the distribution industry. So it is a serious issue and it is one not to take lightly. Industrial needs to be far away from where anyone lives, so I am just hoping. That you will take that into consideration, uh commission, when you vote, this is not gonna be the last time. This is gonna come. This is the second one that has come up recently. Where that that involves two different cities as it relates to warehouses, so. Uh and the fact that it is manufacturing, we don't even know what that's gonna be either. So it's it's a real issue, a real issue, in addition to just the other, the administrative issues of. Of the different of cities. So I encourage you not to vote for it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we don't appear to have.
Sorry, Director Hall, is there anyone else that has a comment in opposition?
We don't appear to have anymore. Ms. Collins just raised her hand, Ms. Ms. Collins, please proceed. Ms. Collins.
I'm here, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, good evening, everyone. Yes, I agree, there is uh environmental issues and and those issues should be addressed. Because the more trucks we have, the more pollution we have. And uh. It is appalling that. These companies can can explain to you. That it will not have an environmental issue, it will not have a traffic issue. Or any other issues related to your quality of life. And it's, it is not wrong for people to stand up and and want their community to stand. And have a better quality of life where we live because this is why. Houses were purchased in this area to begin with. houses were purchased in this area to begin with, because we did not have all these trucks, all the pollution. And this is what we want to maintain. And I agree that no company, a building should be built in two cities, because that will always be an issue, maybe not in the beginning, but down the road, issues, uh, can arise from it. So we need to look at all these, and I think that this should not be voted to move forward in the city of South Fulton. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Um, we have a comment from L M R.
Yes, that is correct. This is Dr. Latanya Martin Rogers. I am a East Point resident that lives near this potential development site. I'd like to thank Ms. Pamela Harvey for taking me to the location, but I am in opposition. It's unfortunate that, um, our city leaders were unable to work with one another to see, to go out and look at how this this, uh, development is going to impact the residents that live there. All we heard was that it's not going to impact the residents of East Point, which it doesn't. To some degree, it does, but to some degree, it doesn't impact East Point residents as much as it will impact the residents that will live near this, um, development. But what I wanted to say was, I hope that our elected officials could be forward thinkers in what they actually commit to bringing into our communities, because if you take a trip or a visit on this side of town from Ben Hill Road, what we are experiencing now is a substation that some people want to put in this community, and we are just surrounded by warehouses from Roosevelt Ha- Highway all the way over here to where I live, which is off, um, Ben Hill Road and, and, and near the Welcome Mall Park. But again, my sentiments are with, with the people that live in the city of South Fulton. We are impacted by airport noise, we are impacted by trucks, and now we are severely impacted by these warehouses that want to continue to come into the community. And there aren't even really good, um, buffers. We have trees that are buffers, nothing is looked into as far as our quality of life and how you prevent this noise, um, how you prevent just the, the impede of traffic and, and tearing up our infrastructure. I say, stand with your community, um, join together, and, and this is just not a good project at all for the city of South Fulton and for the city of East Point as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it doesn't appear that we have any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Director Hull. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Walters, um, I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing.
Commissioner Hadley, a second.
Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Parks, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Weddely.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we have all ayes.
Okay, thank you. At this time, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
There's like.
If there are no questions for the applicant, is, is that?
Commissioner Williams, I do have a question for the applicant.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Williams.
Um, he stated that he did another property that had two different cities, and what, what was the procedure for them in regards to, um, coexisting with, with, um, with the two buildings or the building itself on two different, um, cities, in two different cities.
Uh, thank you for that question. The, the only issue, uh, because the, the no one put it on the developer to fix what happens at every municipal boundary, which is nine one one or tax assessor issues. And so what we did there was an intergovernmental agreement. Uh, since in that case, the majority of the building was in College Park, just as this is the majority of the building and is, is in East Point. There was an intergovernmental agreement that was entered into by the two councils where the College Park would enforce all of the codes like handicapped accessibility and fire codes and um, and that it, it was in the zoning that with the site plan that the various setbacks and things that were, were put on the site plan. So the only other issues to resolve were who is gonna do the reviews of the codes? And since the codes are the same with regard to building code, fire code, health codes, disabilities, accessibility codes, um, South Fulton was willing to let College Park do that, that review. I'm not sure what liability issues are there. Um, but that's, that's how it was resolved. And so the city of College Park did the permit review. Um, and the building was permitted and built.
Okay, so have you, um, in particular, took the different, um, codes and enforcement side by side for East Point and College Park and compared them to see if they coexist and say the same things?
I have not, I have not to this day. I do know that, that, that various codes like building codes and life safety, the state of Georgia tells you what codes to do. With regard to zoning, and then it's possible if there's a tree ordinance or something like that, that the two jurisdictions might have different codes there. And so I think those would get worked out during the course of, of going back and forth on an intergovernmental agreement. Um, and, you know, in this case, fees don't matter, this, our client will pay the fees, and if we have to have peo- both sides review it, then both sides can review it, but, but we, what we did before is went through the city manager's office, they got the various departments, uh, their input, and then the council, they crafted a, an intergovernmental agreement, and then we, they signed it. And then the permitting review went forward.
So is that, okay, so since you know you've done it on another property, is that a possibility on this property, or East Point is saying no altogether, or South Fulton is saying no altogether, or it just hasn't came up yet?
Yeah, let me, let me say that, because you heard a comment in the opposition. Council members Gordon and Butler represent the ward that's adjacent, that, that this is in, in East Point. They met onsite with me there and Mr. Hannison there to look at the site before any of this began. Council member Gordon and council member Butler knew that council member Willis's mother lived right there. Those two, the, so there, there has been coordination between councils. Not only has there been buffers, there's a use restriction that there can be no trucks up against that South Fulton neighborhood. You can have automobiles, there's parking there for automobiles, but not trucks. They worked together on that before East Point made their rezoning decision. So I have every belie- uh, reason to believe that there could be an agreement. But I will say that I've been in this business long enough that I'd never want to predict what city councils will do, and ultimately the South Fulton City Council and the East Point City Council would have to vote to enter into that agreement. Um, my belief is they would, because there's a lot of deference to, to ward, or sort of a ward courtesy is what I call it, but it's a prediction. But there's no reason that it can't be done, and, um, and those kind of things can be ironed out. Uh, I think it makes sense to try to iron them out after a zoning is in place. Uh, because if it doesn't get ironed out, then my client just simply has to go through two different permitting processes, and that's not the end of the world either. It's complicated, and he, he would be kicking me if he was in my office, but he could do that, so. But that's.
So I have another question. Um, the proposal of the building is half and half, could just you do half, could you split it, that only part of it, you know, is in city of South Fulton, and then the other part is in East Point, so you wouldn't have that, uh, restriction?
So I, I'd like to answer it this way. In nineteen eighty, you could have. But now, the, the logistics industry or warehousing, you know, that it delivers things to our doors and it delivers things to stores, those kind of uses now have, you know, whether it's forklifts inside, or they have larger spaces where even the fair, you know, the safety codes require that you have columns that are so far apart. And so today's needs, these buildings, which are about two hundred and eighty square feet, thousand square feet each, are actually small for logistics centers or warehousing, because we've all gone from shopping at the mall to shopping online. And so the kind of, of the size of the building would get too small. Each building would prevent the use from either one. So it is not possible to just cut it in half.
Okay, and I have another question. What percentage, have you done your research to say what percentage is East Point and what percentage is the city of Fa- South Fulton, just in case they do decide to merge like a marriage?
It, well, that, that building is about two hundred and seventy thousand square feet, and it, it appears to me to be about a third of the building, so you know, eighty to ninety thousand square feet would be in South Fulton, and the remainder would be in East Point.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, Kate, thank you, Commissioner Williams. Um, I don't see anyone that has their hand raised, so I will move forward with my questions, um. So I'm hearing the points that staff is making, and I'm also aware of the fact that another warehouse brings potholes, more trucks, and pollution to our residents. Um, what would you say the gain is for residents of the city of South Fulton um, in approving this? Because right now, I'm just not seeing a gain.
Well, I guess, to answer you honestly, we're not East Point imposed the buffers and things like that. We're not promising you anything extra, to be honest, and I don't mean that rudely. I mean that what we're doing here is, we've, our client has a piece of property that you can't get to it because the road has been abandoned, it's barricaded now, but the ownership has been given up. That you've got a piece of land that's zoned agricultural that's surrounded by warehousing. And so the question is, what do you do with it? And so what we have done, the gain is, we've cut off all direct access to Campbell Drive or to anywhere near the neighborhoods. The Camp Creek Business Center, which is a warehouse district, has two points of ingress and egress right at two eighty five. You're not passing, you know, any single family homes to get to those onramps to two eighty five. Um, and all of the traffic is directed away. So the site planning, you know, those are things we did out of respect for the, the citizens and the residents of South Fulton. Um, but other than sort of a tax base kind of argument, which I know doesn't move people in zoning discussions, it's really not about a gain to South Fulton, other than a use, a use, making use of the land and not having land that continues to be vacant and, and continues to be a dumping ground. Um, which is exactly what it is. And those that, i- if, if immediate residents had come and we notified them to oppose this, and they have not, they would tell you that the area right now is a dumping ground. And the owner spends a considerable amount of money removing mattresses and tires and things like that. It's a dead end, and it's heavily wooded, and it's not a good use of land, that kind of, that rundown land. It's actually, the site in South Fulton is a building pad, because there was a school there. It's been five, ten years, so this is actually making use of the land. So I guess I'll take back and say there is a benefit, which is removing a, a, a problem piece of property where dumping occurs, illegal dumping, and making some use of it.
Okay, thank you. Um, commissioners, does anyone else have another question? With that, I will entertain a motion.
Before you do, Madam Chair, let me, um, this is a rather interesting type of dialogue. Let me, uh, make sure I make a couple of points before the commission, uh, makes a decision. And that is, in response to some of the issues that I think were misinterpreted by the applicant.
Okay.
And that is, related to the applicant's responses, um, I am providing the land use and the zoning districts for the city of South Fulton. The city of East Point, as we all know, is a gif, uh, is a different jurisdiction. And so, yes, they do have zoning districts that are industrial. But for the city of South Fulton, and if I can get my staff member to go back to the zoning map, it's a couple of slides before this. You will notice that everything that is colored and everything that has a zoning designation in and around this area is anything but light industrial. So you see, again, R three A. All of these are zoning districts in the city of South Fulton. A G one, A, C one, mix, all of, this is, this entire area represents the boundaries of the city. Nowhere do you see, in the city of South Fulton, rela- uh, related to these parcels, is there a zoning district in the city of South Fulton that is identified as industrial? Therein lies the difference between what I am conveying to you, the commissioners, and what I'm conveying to the public. Now, yes, East Point, in their own activities, have went through rezonings, and they have industrial parcels. But for the activities of our city, we have none. And so I equate that to me, as I've stated in the um, staff report, I equate that to me, that our intent is to keep this low-density and those supporting types of zoning districts, such as a C one, or an A, or a mix, but certainly not industrial. And I just want to make sure that that point is clear, as it relates to the applicant's take on the existing zoning districts in East Point versus the existing and current zoning districts in the city of South Fulton.
Okay, thank you, Director Hull, um. And if that is all, I will entertain a motion. I will entertain a motion to approve, defer, or deny this development.
This is Commissioner Jones. Uh, I make a recommendation to deny Z twenty-two zero one four um, on the basis of staff recommendation to deny.
Okay, do we have a second?
I love it, I love Commissioner Hadley on that one.
Properly moved and seconded. Staff, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Weddely.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we have all ayes.
Okay, the ayes have it. We'll move on to item three, public hearing to consider U twenty-two dash zero zero nine, the applicant Eugene.
Madam, Madam Chair, point of order. Um, just looking at the time, uh, we began at six P M. We're at eight forty-two now. Um, we had kind of an open-ended questioning, um, uh, uh, during the hearing. Um, if we could please hold to the ten minutes, uh, for, uh, for the, for the hearing, for public comments, uh, so that we can hear everything, but that we can move the meeting.
Okay, thank you, yes, I agree. Um, staff, can someone keep time for me? I was not aware that I would be the, I would need to keep time, um.
Yes, ma'am, treasure our singletary, um, I will keep the time.
Thank you so much. And moving along to item three, public hearing to consider U twenty-two dash zero zero nine. And moving along to item three, public hearing to consider U twenty-two dash zero zero nine. The applicant Eugene Bruce West is requesting a special use permit to develop a new RV campground. Staff, I will let you take it from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission and the public. Derek Hall reporting on behalf of the Community Development and Reputatory Affairs Department uh, on agenda item number, uh, U twenty-two dash zero zero nine. Next slide. As it means of providing background information, the applicant has submitted a application for a special use permit to develop a two-hundred space RV park and campground in a location in District Four off of Teal Road. Within our code, you will find that there are three sections in particular that staff reference related to the governance of RV parks and campgrounds. The proposed site is located off of Teal Road. Teal Road is, by classification of road types in the city of South Fulton, a local road that is the lowest level road that we could have in terms of our classification. The road itself is gravel-based, and there are no road demarcations on the road. That means there is no striping, there is no curb and gutter, there are no general improvements that you would assume to be on a road. Uh, the width of the road, and we have actually verified this based upon our site visit this morning, the the widest width of the road is eighteen feet. And as it relates to the actual setting of the project, the setting of the project is rural, characterized by very low-density residential development. Next slide. The future land use map in the twenty-twenty-one Comprehensive Plan identified this area as rural neighborhood. And some of the general characteristics uh, indicate that is to preserve the primary rural residential character in the city of South Fulton. This area represents a transition between agriculture and sub- suburban neighborhood character areas. Next slide. The zoning map, as is indicated previously, is AG one or agriculture. Next slide. The applicant has submitted the attach, attached site plan. Uh, this provides a general overview of what is being proposed. Uh, notice that there are approximately, probably can't count them, but two hundred spaces for RV parks. In addition, there is some accessory structures, including a swimming pool, a store, a retail store, uh, some bathroom areas, and some additional accessory uses that, um, will support the lifestyle of individuals who will be using the proposed RV park and campground. One other thing to note related to this project is that the applicant is proposing to have this RV park and campground open twenty-four hours a day. Next slide. This is another illustration of the site plan. Uh, this is in black and white, and it provides some detail related to the site plan itself. You will note that directly to the east, that the the zoning for the district is AG one. There's a portion that's not a part of the project that's zoned AG one. And then the area directly south is also zoned AG one. And throughout these areas, there is, uh, the location of low-density residential units. Next slide. This shows an aerial view of the project site. As you can see, it's populated, densely populated with trees. Next slide. A second aerial view. The main access point will be off of Teal Road. Next slide. To make sure that we have a full understanding of the actual project area, I had the staff to go out today to take pictures of the existing roadway. And these are images of the existing roadway that would abut the entrance and exit from the main campground. As you can see, it's extremely rural. Next slide. The paved street that you see there, um, is Cascade Palmetto Highway. Um, and so while that road is paved, this road, as you see in this, in the images here, where it says Teal Road, are the beginning of the gravel-based road at this location. And this would lead to the direct main access point to the area. These are additional site photos that were taken at the property. Next slide, please. Additional site photos that staff had taken at the property. I wanted to make sure that the Commission was fully aware of the applicant's intent. Um, as you're probably aware, with every application that we receive from applicants, the applicants are to provide an overview of the proposal. You will notice that in this proposal, the applicant has described as a part of the overview, a secluded but easily accessible camping area. I make that point because you will notice, as we get to the analysis, that RV parks and camping grounds have a special set of requirements that they need to meet. So this information was shared to staff by the applicant. So in addition to having an RV park and camping area, the applicant is proposing a swimming pool, walking trails, pet areas, game room, toilet and shower facilities, propane refilling areas, garbage collection, playground, laundry facilities, and wa- waste dump stations. Next slide. And so, uh, again, this is kind of a summary. Uh, there's a proposed chapel, there's a proposed outdoor pool area and recreational area. There is a proposed laundry building, there's a proposed building for retail sales. And then, of course, as we mentioned earlier, two hundred spaces, sixty-five by sixteen feet, it says here, for recreational vehicle parking um, for the vehicles that would be using this site. If you notice, there is a secondary access that is being proposed that is a thoroughfare or an easement, if you will, from Cedar Grove all the way through to connect to the main area. Next slide. That's the area that's being shown here. So that's the secondary access road off of Cedar Grove Road to connect to the main proposed project site. Now let's get into the analysis of the project. There are, as mentioned earlier, three sections of the zoning ordinance that discusses recreational vehicles and campgrounds. So as a part of providing this analysis, staff reviewed the sections. Sections fourteen dash fourteen zero zero eight under definitions, the zoning ordinance use table, section seven two one two 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 one one, I'm sorry, and seven two one two one four. And the use table section seven two one two one four is going to be critical as we continue with this analysis. Article three, which outlines restrictions on particular uses for recreational and vacation camps. Um, I won't necessarily bore you with the definition of a RV, um, as defined in the zoning ordinance, but just understand that there is a full description and definition of what a RV, it outlines for items in the, uh, staff report. I mentioned that you should pay close attention to sections seven two one two two one one and seven two one two one four, which provide additional development standards that govern RV and recreational camps. My intent and including the section that was entitled applicant's intent is, the applicant himself, when submitting this, indicated that this would be an RV park and campground. And as such, we have to apply the development standards as outlined specifically in section seven two one two one four. So before we get into that specifically, the presence of the two hundred RV parking spaces and additional accessory uses may contribute to unintended environmental impacts, including increased amounts of litter and poll- and pollutant runoff into the stream. There is a stream buffer at the eastern end of the project site for which the applicant is proposing to include some additional spaces east of that buffer. There is a proposed curb cut from the local street. And again, the local street in this case is Teal Road. Teal Road is a road that is fifteen feet in width. It's currently, uh, gravel. Uh, and there is no curb and gutter. So there are li- literal ditches on either side of the road. And just imagine for a moment that RVs, big and small, would be using this as the primary access to get into the project site. Trash receptacles are located throughout the area, but as you will hear from the specific codes, this is not permitted within two hundred feet from a major roadway or a, um, specific zoning district. There are buffer requirements that are not met based upon the proposed site plan. And there are two proposed septic tanks. The requirements, the development standards in the code require that any type of RV park and campground must have access to public sewer services. Next slide. So before we get into the specific denials, or we can go to the next slide, staff, for these reasons and many more, staff is recommending denial of this project. And just for the benefit of the Commission and for the public, I have tried to enumerate what those items are related to the specific code. Several development standards as outlined in section three oh two point three oh, recreational and vacation camps cannot be achieved at the proposed location. So I mentioned the curb cut. Facilities must be serviced by public sewer. A hundred-foot wide buffer and a ten-foot improvement setbacks are required for adjacent residential zoning districts, AG one zoning districts and adjoining public spe- street. So there isn't that appropriate buffer based upon the location of these streets. Sanitary facilities and trash receptacles shall be located a minimum of two hundred feet from any residential zoning district and/or AG one zoning district. Trash receptacles in this instance are within two hundred feet. Safety of the placement of vehicle parking stalls and site maneuvering. If we could go back to the site plan for just a moment, uh, the colored site plan. The applicant has described, as you see the entrance here on Teal Road, the applicant has described that the vehicles that will be parking into these RV stalls will have to back into those stalls.
Right.
So, um, that poses, as you can imagine, a series of challenges. If for whatever reason, all two hundred stalls were to be occupied by RV vehicles, it is going to be a challenge to navigate and maneuver RV vehicles without either hitting existing landscaping, which is, a part of it is being proposed, to remain, or to not come in conflict or contact with existing RVs that are parked at the site. In between each stall is an approximate eight-foot landscape buffer, as you can kind of see, as illustrated here with the delineation of trees. So again, if vehi- RV vehicles are, uh, rear-end, uh, reverse parking in these stalls, it can potentially cause direct damage to the landscaped areas and/or the vehicles that are parked in the stalls. Go back to the, uh, last slide. We mentioned that there are environmental concerns related to the proximity of the existing stream buffer, particularly given the number of RV vehicles that are being proposed at the site and the number of activities that are being proposed. Uh, having a retail store, having a chapel, having a swimming pool. So all of these accessory uses, um, might contribute to raise environmental concerns in proximity to the stream buffer, not to mention that there are proposed RV sites located directly east of where the buffer exists. And then finally, when we look at the comp plan and we look at the intent of this area, we notice that what the applicant is proposing is not appropriate, given the number of vehicles that are being proposed and the amount of activity that is proposed to be occurring. As you consider that this is going to be, as proposed by the applicant, a twenty-four-hour operation. So given all of these concerns, understanding that the applicant has tried to work through set of changes related to the plan, staff cannot support the project as proposed, and therefore is respectfully submitting a request to deny the project based upon the findings in the staff report. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Director Hall. I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Walters, and I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Perry, I second it.
Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Parks, you can call the roll.
Commissioner Hallie.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodley. Commissioner Woodley.
She may have stepped away.
Can we move forward without her eye? Is that?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have all eyes.
Okay, um, is the applicant present?
Um, Bruce West is not not present. Um, I am here in his stead. This is Connor Jones.
Okay, um, and just, I want everyone to be aware of time, um, in sharing, so go ahead.
Uh, are you referring to me as the applicant at proxy?
I'm sorry, come again, you kind of broke up.
Were you, when you said go ahead, were you referring to me as the applicant by proxy?
Um. Director Hall or Mr. McQuinn, and could someone help me out with that? Is that the case right now? Or are we moving on to comments in favor and comments opposed?
No, um, I I received a call from the applicant. He indicated that he was going to be on a plane and could not participate, but he was going to have a representative to speak on his, on his behalf. So. So, Jim speaking is the representative.
Correct.
So go, go ahead.
This is, this, this is Mr. McLendon. This is part of comments in favor, so this needs to be uh, time.
Yeah, okay, I, I needed clarity on that. I was told two different things, so the ten minutes for is going to include the applicant, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so staff, uh, can you note that? Um, and can you please start the time?
Yes, Madam Chair, Tom has started.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess with that I will uh, proceed. Madam Chair, thank you and uh, members in attendance here. My associate, Mr. West, had previously made numerous correspondence attempts uh, to request to defer this until December. Um, it was not until Saturday evening at eight twenty-three PM that he was finally presented with a staff report with um, a lot of issues that were not previously uh, been made aware to him or, or to us. Um, initial application was submitted back in, let's see, July twenty-ninth. Um, and that was under previous planning director and, and staff. There was extensive correspondence back and forth about zoning requirements. Um, it was not until Saturday night, like this days ago that the uh, requirements under, what's it, what's referred to here as vacation. Um, vacation or recreation. Uh, rather than exclusively RV parks and I see now, based on Mr. Hall's uh, comments, based on Bruce's letter of intent, he makes reference to campground. Uh, that was something that will need to be revised and um, changed on, on his end. So in, also in review of the staff reports, there were numerous factual errors uh, on the um, plans that were submitted. Uh, one small example, I mean, being the eight foot spacing between the, the the parking sites, that, that is not the case. It's, it's much wider than that. I believe it's twenty feet. Um, so, given the amount of, of differences here and last minute um, criteria that we're just made aware of, we would uh, request that this be deferred um, until we can make further review and changes as necessary.
Okay, thank you. Staff, are there any comments in favor of this?
Yes, Madam Chair, I see that we have two hands in the audience. Uh, Ms. Gilliard, are you speaking uh, for or against the petition?
Against.
Alright, so let's, let's save you for the uh, opposition. Alright, um. Madam Chair, I do not see, uh, well, I see Mr. Harold, are you speaking for or against the petition?
I would be speaking again. This is Harold, I'm speaking again.
Again.
Okay, so let's um, hold off on you. Alright, um, Ms. Linda Harry, are you speaking for or against? Ms. Harris? Please come off me.
I'm speaking against.
Alright, so let's hold off on you, madam. Um, so Madam Chair, we have no other comments for the petition.
Okay, then um, why don't we move on to the comments in opposition?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, let's start with Ms. Gilliard. Ms. Gilliard, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, I just want to say that uh, this project would be between Cascade Palmetto Highway and Cedar Grove Road. There is nothing that the developer can do to change that. Cascade Palmetto is a major truck route. And there are very few of those in the area. And it's because of what was, what the council put in place uh, almost immediately to prevent the trucks from driving down small streets like Cedar Grove Road. So if that is the main entrance, that's going to really be a problem for two hundred RVs trying to go in and out of Cascade Palmetto. That's something they can't change. On the other end of it is Cedar Grove Road. Across the street from it is two hundred and seventy-nine homes planned there. A little bit down the street from it is six hundred homes. Going a little bit further down, U- Union City is going to build four hundred and fifty apartments. This is a traffic nightmare with that not even being there. And adding two hundred RVs there that will be coming in day and night will only make it worse. So in addition to, and, and I was already told by um, that people that live in the area about the stream buffer and about the sewer, et cetera, et cetera, and a lot of the other things that uh, Mr. Hall spoke about, those things are not going to change. Because it's already in the zoning. The criteria is already in the zoning. You can't tra- change the traffic or the streets because of where it's located. And not only that, it would be in between where other people are living. And so it's just not an ideal place. It might be a wonderful concept and there are many streets in District Four that are not paved, that are much like Teal Road. And so this is just not a good location for what the developer wants to bring to that street. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gilliard. Um, Ms. Harris, you have the floor.
Um, I agree with her totally. I actually live on Cascade Palmetto Highway. It's like a fast-moving train now. It's just truck traffic until midnight every night. And it's uh, it's extremely dangerous. No one can walk along it. Um, Teal Road, I'm very familiar with. I'm within a mile of this project. And uh, it's always flooding. There's a creek that runs through this site that would be polluted and would pollute uh, Horsehead Lake, which is a lovely area lake and it, you know, just down from this. It's just a really bad idea all the way around. Um, I wish these folks the best uh, moving forward, but they need to find a different location than here. Thank you so much. You guys, uh, you have, you've made my day. We were all up in a tear here in this area about this project. And I'm so pleased with the city of South Fulton for realizing that, you know, this is just not a good idea in any in any way, shape or form. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harris. Um, and we have the last um, residents here, Mr. Stevens, you have the floor.
Yeah, I mean. Thank you all. I'm at eighty-four twenty Cedar Grove Road. I'm literally right behind this particular project. I think many of you all are familiar with me by now because I've attended most of the meetings. Most of my homeowners who are on here, including Ms. Harris, when we found out that this had a zero address on it. And you all were neighbors and I noticed I physically walked to every home in this area and put in a flyer in their mailboxes and they all were notified by me within the last couple of days. For Mr. to get on here on behalf of Mr. to say he does not have enough time, we talked. He sent a FedEx package to my house, asked me to approve this project. And he put in there, asking me if I did not want the road between my house and Mr. Dwight, he would consider not doing it. We do not RVs in South, set up South Fulton at all. There is an area that you can probably maybe get it done, but I doubt it to get done. That is at the State Park, which is Cochran Mill. You can actually park RVs there, but good luck getting that done in Chattahoochee Hill country. FYI, it's close to one at Stone Mountain Park. And the resident ahead of it beside that, that one just got closed within the last few months. This is not something we want in the city of South Fulton. I wouldn't care if it was ten RVs. I am so glad that many people showed up tonight. A lot of them had to log off because this is taking a long time, but we do not want this in this area. We prefer to keep AG or houses to go up. I have got a friend that I, a colleague now that's on that board and they're going to let me know if this guy tried to do anything or bring this back up again. We're going to stay on top of. A port to the um, agenda you all had. Number six and number fifteen is kind of puzzling to me. Number six, um, states that if it was reduced, maybe this could get done. And number fifteen, if I'm not mistaken, let me go back to it, I mean, just go over right quick. I don't want to take up too much time here. Number fifteen, uh, suitability of the land. Uh, again, on Cascade Palmetto, it's saying that it could probably be located in a different part of South Fulton. We got other land. We don't want this in the city of South Fulton, period. Just like you don't want that industrial park out here as well. We don't want to see RV nowhere. I don't care if it's ten miles from my house, I'm still going to be on the board to properly oppose it, oppose it because I don't want it near my neighbors or no one else's neighbors. So, that is my point made and, and again, Doc, uh, Mr. Hall, I thank you so much for taking the time to literally go over this, to speak toward it, have the people out here to take a look and see. We are, it's quiet out here. It's nice and we love it this way. I'm a realtor. I'm a small developer. I've been in City of South Fulton, selling home over twenty-two years. I did the lakes of Cedar Grove and many other communities around here. And we, I want RV parks in this area.
Alright, Mr. Stevens, thank you so much. And Madam Chair, we have one more hand raised. Mr. Harold, you have the floor. And by the way, Mr. Harold, you have two minutes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I appreciate it. So Mr. Stevens just said, I appreciate the effort that staff has put into reviewing this proposal. And I have to say that I pretty much agree with it word for word. They have done a very good job of, of analyzing, of analyzing uh, what is proposed, how it is and for where it is being proposed to be built. I've lived in South Fulton for many years. I live on Cedar Grove Road. I live across from the alternate entrance that they're proposing to this subject, uh, this trailer park where it would come into Cedar Grove Road. And uh, I would say that Teal Road is absolutely not appropriate or not usable uh, for driving uh, an RV down, let alone driving to an RV park down Teal Road. Uh, it's just, it's unapproved, it's very narrow. It has deep ditches on each side. It's, it's totally inappropriate. Oh, and as Ms. Harris said, there is not going to be sewer anytime soon. And sewer is an absolute requirement for one of these. Uh, so that's, that's not going to change no matter uh, how long it, it's delayed. Uh, Cedar Grove is a quiet residential community. We have uh, single-family homes on generous lots. And to even think about putting two hundred trailers in the middle of that is, is, uh, is, it's really unthinkable. Uh, the folks who would patronize a, an, an RV park in this location. Uh, they have no natural attraction that they're coming to see. There are no event venues that would draw them here. So there's going to be transient people who have no connection at all to this community. And I'm afraid they'll have no regard for the residents of, of this, of this community. Traffic would be a major issue as, as already been mentioned. Uh, and it just uh, the bottom line of all of this is this is not the place for an RV park to bring in two hundred trailers and the people that would be occupying those trailers. Uh, so I, I would urge the, the uh, commission to go along with the recommendation from staff and deny this request. Oh, and get it out of our hair so that we don't have to keep coming back and coming back to deal with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Harold. Madam Chair, that are, that's all of the public comments.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Perry, I move that we close public hearing. Commissioner Adley, I second.
Properly moved and seconded. Staff, can you please call the roll?
Add a comment. My hand was up.
I'm not seeing, who, who said that? I'm sorry, I'm just not seeing anyone's hand.
Uh, Gloria Williams, and I apologize, I had my hand up, I don't know what happened.
And you're in opposition?
Yes.
Okay, um, well, go ahead and share, if you could just keep it brief. We're hearing a lot of opposition. We hear you, hear you all.
Madam Chair, we have a motion on the, on the, on the We have a motion that's been properly moved and seconded.
Okay. We have heard a lot of opposition, um, and uh, we are going to move forward with the vote. So, properly moved and seconded. Staff, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hatley. Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodley.
Aye.
We have six ayes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Parks. Um, and now commissioners, if you have any questions for the applicant, please raise your hand. I personally do not have any questions. I hear a complete opposition from staff and from residents, um. So I have no questions, but if anyone else would like to ask a question, please do so. Or we can move on with the vote. Well, if there's no discussion, then I will entertain a motion to um, approve, defer, or deny.
This is Commissioner Walters. I'd like to make a motion to deny this application based on um, the staff's recommendation as well as um, the, the, the the commentary and what we, what we note um, to be um, issues with the, the special use related to preserving the character of the area. Um, and the potential negative impacts and environmental impacts that this type of application can bring.
Do we have a second?
Uh, Commissioner Jones, I second that.
Properly moved and seconded. Staff, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hatley. Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodley.
Aye.
We have seven ayes.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item four, public hearing.
Madam Chair, point of order. Um, we began at six PM. It's nine twenty. Um, may we please consider a motion uh, to move the rest of this agenda to the December twenty-eighth meeting, please?
Yes.
I second that motion, Commissioner Walters.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Staff, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hatley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
No.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Woodley.
Aye.
We have si- Madam Chair, we have six ayes and one no.
Okay, the ayes have it and I'm not a hundred percent clear on how to move forward from here. Do I move on to discussion items? Or are we moving everything to the December meeting?
No, ma'am, the, the motion was to end this meeting.
Okay, okay. Um. So do I now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
So second, Commissioner Walters.
Properly moved and seconded.
Madam Chair, before you do, I just
Yeah.
Have a point of reference related to the agenda.
Okay.
We do have two items that are pending related to city council that are, that are agenda's for tomorrow. Those are the items that are listed under new business. So I certainly understand the urgency and the time uh, that it's taken to get through the agenda. But those are items that are scheduled to go to city council tomorrow. With all due respect, Mr. Director, perhaps we should have heard those first.
That. This is Commissioner Williams. I requested it in the last meeting that it be first.
That the new business be first, yeah.
I did request that in the last meeting.
I didn't have clarity on old business and new business, and I think some of what is under old business is actually according to, uh, I didn't have clarity on old business and new business, and I think some of what is under old business is actually, according to, um, Reginald McClendon is actually new business, so I just didn't have clarity on that. Um, and in the future, we can definitely do that. Um.
Madam Chair, all of the items, yeah, all of the items under old business were already properly noticed and agendaized. They were just deferred because of issues that were related to working out the specific development requirements. Um, but the items under new, the, the new items are actually new agenda items that will be discussed for the first time at the planning commission. But it is, whatever the pleasure is of the.
When we had the last meeting, I requested that because we had just had a meeting on Wednesday. And then you, Mr. Hall, requested that we add a few, and you've added four.
So point of order, I'm hearing that people want to end the meeting. Um, Director Holt, will we quickly move through new business? Um, and just honor that everyone is ready to, um, close the meeting and.
We have a motion on the floor that's been properly moved and seconded, and we were calling for a vote.
Okay.
Not a member of this body.
Can I have Mr. McClendon come forward and just tell me how to proceed? Um.
You have to follow the motion.
There's a, there's a motion at the second.
So I called for a vote.
We're ready.
That. Okay. It is properly decided. Can, staff, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
No.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Already, so is this booked to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
No.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
Commissioner Whedley.
Aye.
We have five ayes and two noes.
Okay, so the meeting is now adjourned. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair.
And this new business will be moved to December twenty-eighth?
Right.
Okay. And in future, we will do new business before a longer list of old business.
Madam Chair, that would require a vote for you to move the order of the agenda. Typically, on agendas, old business occurs first and then new business.
Okay.
Commissioner Walters, and, um, I think this goes back to what Commissioner Williams had mentioned, um, with regards to the new business, um, when this agenda was originally proposed. Um, again, you know, we were, that, that there, that there were things that needed to go to council. Um, and we were ready to, 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 to move those and move them along. And we were told that one or two, um, applications might come in, and we reviewed some pretty lengthy ones tonight, so. Um, this was, this was an off-schedule meeting. Um, so can, can staff provide some direction for, for the council in terms of what next steps and how we're gonna plan that? Or is that something that happens offline?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Walters.
The next scheduled meeting for the planning commission is December the twenty-eighth. So if we follow our schedule, or we can plan to schedule another meeting earlier in the month.
Okay, this is Commissioner Williams. Oh, can I substitute the motion?
The meeting has technically been adjourned already.
Yeah, I think it was, it was motion and seconded and voted on, so I guess we're in this position where, I mean, it's, it's done. Um, and everything will be moved to December twenty-eighth, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the order, this is Commissioner Williams, the order that we do, we have to vote on because those items were so minor, as you said, Mr. Hall, and that's why I thought they should have done earlier. Because once I saw the agenda and the applicants, I knew this would be a long meeting.
And what I'm hearing, Commissioner Williams, is next time I can actually, uh, entertain a motion to change the order of the agenda, and then you can make a motion to put our, the new business first. So if we feel like something like that is essential, then, um, then we can do that next time, and I will just entertain a motion for that. I did not, I would need to do that.
According to Hall, it was important because of the city council meeting. And that's what they wanted it for, but we've already adjourned this meeting, so it's not in void. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay, okay.
Technically, all of the items are important to city council, even the meeting, even the case, the public hearing cases that we had tonight. There were two specific items that we needed to have addressed because they will be scheduled for city council. So because the commission didn't act on them, they will now have to get pulled from the agenda for tomorrow for city council.
Okay.
Yeah, the items that were.
So as Commissioner Williams, when you asked for this special meeting, the special meeting was for the text amendment. So why did we add the other thing? That's my understanding. I don't understand.
The other items were also pressing to get agendaized. And so we needed to have those items on the agenda as well. Initially, it was going to be for just the text amendments. But then we were needing to have a discussion on the other items. Due in part because of the deferrals that had occurred in the previous months.
So, okay, this is my question as Commissioner Williams. Um, so you had to add both? Did you have to add those to the special meeting? Was it mandatory or not?
Commissioner Williams, I'm not quite sure what you mean when you say mandatory.
Okay, when you asked for the special meeting, okay, this is a special meeting. When you asked for it and you said you wanted it for the text amendment, we didn't even cover the text amendment. So why was the other applicants allowed to be added to this at the last minute? Because we just had a meeting less than seven days ago.
There were still some changes that were being made before we had the last planning commission meeting. And so we're not scheduling another meeting for this month. Um, there is a scheduled meeting that occurred, that was to occur at the end of, um, November. That meeting is not going to be scheduled in lieu of this meeting.
Okay, so the meeting that was in November last week and the meeting this week and being that, okay, I'm confused. I'm just confused on what you asked for, and it's all coming together and it's not being done, what you requested.
Everybody, if I could chime in, this is Reginald McClendon, Assistant City Attorney for the City of South Fulton. Uh, I'd just like to, to re- remind the board that we are currently no longer in a meeting. We have voted to adjourn the meeting that was scheduled for tonight. Uh, and so continuing to discuss matters, uh, public matters of the board, uh, at this time.
So can I, can I do a motion to, can I do a motion to reconvene the meeting so we can discuss it? That's all I need is a second, if we, if we wanted to discuss.
You're, you're, you're no longer in a, in a meeting, so mo-motions and seconds aren't.
To reconvene the meeting. I can't request that. I can't request a motion to reconvene the meeting so we can have the discussion. That's what you're saying. Mr. McClendon.
Uh, I don't believe we can, because in order for you, for us to take a motion in a second, we would have to be in, in a meeting, and the meeting that was convened for tonight has been adjourned by vote of the board. So, a- a- as I was saying, that to continue to discuss these, to discuss uh, these public matters of the board could very well be considered to be, uh, violation of the Georgia Open Meetings Law. Uh, being that we're no longer in, uh, a meeting. Uh, so it would be my, my advice to the planning commission at this time, uh, to, um, no longer continue to talk about these subjects. Uh, if you wish to, um, send email questions to the director, um, then, uh, that might be a more appropriate place to cover these, uh, topics.
And Mr. McClendon, I would love for us to meet a little bit earlier, um, at the next meeting. I know that you said you could help organize that, because I just want to go over a few things with the whole group. And I hear Commissioner Williams wanting to discuss things too, and I'm just, um, I'm thinking it would be good for us to have that moment.
Madam Chair, you cannot schedule a meeting prior to the public, the scheduled time of the planning commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I thought Attorney McClendon said that that was an option for us, as long as it was public?
It has to be publicly noticed. But the challenge with that is that we cannot discuss items on the agenda before we convene the.
No, I'm actually not thinking about items on the agenda. I'm just thinking about cohesion in terms of how the meetings are being run. And for us to have a moment with Mr. McClendon, I think would be positive.
As long as there's no, no decisions being made.
No, I, I'm thinking more like, uh, how I can, you know, and people understand that I, that we can entertain motions to put new business ahead of old business, things like that. I just think it would be good for people to have a moment to ask questions. And I know that, um, there are a few points of clarity I want to work on as well, so I just thought that that could be positive.
I'll leave that up to the city, uh, the Assistant City Attorney.
Uh, yeah, if you, if you send me an email, we can see if we can get that organized.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, Commissioner Walters. Good evening.
Yes, Commissioner Walter?
I said, I'm not, I'm just saying.
Good evening, good night. I think to me, longer adjourned, so.
Okay, sorry, any reason. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Have a good evening.
You too, bye-bye.
Goodbye, everybody.